So let's go ahead and make sure we let everybody into the room. Let's get started.
All right, incoming.
Incoming. Just a few more people. Okay, looks like our waiting room has been emptied, so we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome, everyone. This is the regular meeting for the board supervisors for the County of Lake. Today is March 2nd. Today, we will do a moment of silence as we know, mental health has been a large issue throughout this entire COVID-19 pandemic. And so we will go ahead and hold everyone in our thoughts that have been impacted, whether directly from the loss of a loved one or from just the burdens of the issues created by this pandemic. So have a moment of silence. Supervisor Simon, would you like to lead us in the pledge allegiance today?
Yes, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands one God, one nation, another without independence and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move on to item number four, consideration for extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Are there any items being requested for extra items from the board or from staff? Hearing none, let's go ahead and move on to item number five, the approval of the consent agenda. Any items from the board who wishes to pull an item?
No.
Okay, Jake, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda for further discussion?
All right, I sent a meet request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
My first name John J O H N, last name H O U. I work for Jinchun Agriculture in Lower County. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone want to pull an item from the consent agenda, 5.1 through 5.5? And hearing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda 5.1 through 5.5.
Second.
Okay, and we have a second from Supervisor Simon. Johanna, if we can please get a roll call.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall.
Hi.
Supervisor Scott.
Hi.
Supervisor Piska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, 9:03, let's go ahead and skip straight to weekly calendars. And if we can get that started, let's go ahead and start with Supervisor Piska today.
I just have a couple of things to report on. Supervisor Simon and I met with the CMAT team yesterday to get that going. Again, we, for those of you that don't know, that's the Community Mitigation Action Team that works with the National Forest Service. And they provide, they come into communities and do an assessment and provide framework for building a strategy, all things related to fire, all throughout our community and all of our organizations. So we have that ball rolling again. We ask that they come to our county as soon as possible. It's been put off a couple of times, last spring, last fall. And we would like it to be complete before July 1st, when our fire season starts. So we're going to be working on that together over the next couple of weeks to get through the pre-planning and get into, get them here, hopefully either virtually or hybrid. And then, uh, Middletown Unified School District started yesterday in hybrid. And Kelseyville teachers went back to, yesterday, and students will be back next week. So that's, those are my updates, and we get to my calendar. Tomorrow morning, I have a TID meeting. Yes?
I'll go for it.
Oh, okay, TID, Arian, A Jean. And I have a strategy meeting with the Fire Safety Council to get that council up and running again. I have a meeting with Takara, cavern check-in in the evening. Thursday and Friday, I have the new supervisor CSAC. Saturday is our Bloombergers event where I'm, we're, we're doing a fire break maintenance on the Anderson Fire Break during my house. We have a whole community event planned around reducing fuels in our, in our neighborhood. And then in the evening, the crab boil with the Claude Mountain Lions, drive-through event. And then Monday, my meeting with Carol. I have a meeting with the HOAs in code enforcement on the zone of benefit status. And then meeting again with the CMAT team Monday afternoon.
Okay, thank you very much for your report Supervisor Scott.
Um, yes, tomorrow, we will be continuing our interviews for the Executive Director of Hope Rising in the morning. I have a Healthy Start meeting at 11:00. I have double book meetings, I have the Children's Council and the ACT meeting at 1:00. On Thursday, I have at noon, the Smart Start Bright Future meeting, to try to get that rolled out. At 3:00, I have the COC meeting. On Friday, I will be attending the uprooting, the structural drivers of health equality. And then on Monday, Executive Committee meeting for Hope Rising. And then we'll be attending the drive-through event for Clear Lake High School senior class. It's a enchiladas that you can drive through on parallel drive. So look that up on Facebook and let's support our seniors at Clear Lake High School.
Awesome. Thank you very much Supervisor Simon.
Okay, one second here. Apologize?
No worries.
So board meeting today, may have a short discussion this afternoon with Carol, potentially, but not sure on that one. But tomorrow, Wednesday, have the Space Committee meeting in the afternoon. On Thursday, got a full schedule on Thursday, South Deal Committee meeting, State Board of Fire Services. And in the afternoon, those are in the morning, and then in the afternoon, the meeting with the Attorney General's Office. Friday, kind of open at this point, we'll be returning phone calls and working with constituents. On, don't have anything on Saturday or Sunday. I think there is a local food drive-through, there is a lot of those going on. Here, I think it's Central Park, was doing something this weekend, I could be wrong on the name, but, and then I'll back here on Monday for a meeting with Carol in the morning. And then we have, again, we put the CMAT meetings that Jessica talked about on a regular schedule to continue that thing moving forward. I know we were talking about a few, few weeks in a row, so excited to get that moving. Jessica, thank you for coordinating that and getting that really moving. So we're moving forward with that, and then back here on Tuesday for next week's meeting.
Thank you Supervisor Simon.
And I did want, I did want to say one thing, I think I had too much coffee this morning. I want a little click on the pledge allegiance on there, I'm upset with myself on that, I apologize about that.
You'll, you'll get a do-over.
Yeah.
All right Supervisor Crandall.
So, agenda review following this meeting. Tomorrow, TID, I think it is, yeah, TID, in the morning. Think I'll be meeting with the Robinson Council in the afternoon timeframe. Earth Committee at 4:00, CSA in the evening at 7:00, that's Wednesday, Thursday. Moke, what time is that South Deal meeting?
It's 10:30, you haven't gotten noticed yet, or what?
No, not yet, but that's, that's perfect.
Okay, all right, I'll make sure to send an email on that too, but it's, it starts at 10:30. It's going to be on Zoom.
That works out so perfect, I'm doing a, I'm going to talk with some kids at Upper Lake High School. One of my, one of, one of the kids, their parents asked if I go and talk with them, so. Right when I'm finished, I'll be able to go right to that South Deal Committee. And then probably come here at the office and see what I can take care of here. Friday, probably be a big day for constituents and whatnot. A lot of things going on the North Shore, trying to work out some of the issues of code enforcement, homelessness, things like that. So, yeah, doing that stuff on the 8th. I have a meeting set and I'm just waiting for the person to confirm that's wanting to do the project. That should be a meeting with me and myself, Bruno, and both Scots, one from community development and the other from special district. So hopefully that works out and we can meet on that, meeting with Carol in the evening. And, well, actually after that meeting at 3:00 PM, and then after, in the evening, I had a Zoom meeting with the folks in Nice who are having like the monthly, or actually bimonthly meetings of discussing some of the crime, criminal activity and trying to keep a, keep ahead of some of that, working on getting lights and whatnot in that area. So I got a lot of help from, from staff on that as well, or direction at least. And then back here on Tuesday, the 9th, yeah.
Perfect, thank you very much. So for me, just want to report real quick, yesterday, we had our Middle Creek Restoration Project. We are trying to figure out the pathway with our new contract with Momentum, who's going to be doing the appraisals and the acquisitions of properties. And we are looking at prioritizing the properties that make up Bloody Island. We are limited to potentially April 1st or March 31st, 2022, for when we can spend that money. So we're also looking for an extension, as COVID has really delayed a lot of the appraisals. Actually, duck hunting also delayed our appraisals in that area as well. So we didn't want to send out appraisal, appraisers in a dangerous situation. Also later that, yesterday had, what I think is important to report out on is we had a subcommittee of the Waste Management Advisory Board for illegal dumping in the county. And so we're looking at revamping a little bit of our ordinance and to strengthen it, give it more teeth, and also provide some other ancillary help on the side as to what else is going to help challenge those who are trying to continue illegally dumping. It's educate, enforce, clean up, and the last one, I'm thinking of Lars, but it's not coming through. There's, there's one other part to it. I'll figure it out, but anyway, so those were important meetings that I wanted to make sure and report on, and what will hopefully come back to the board within the next few months to provide some actual ordinance changes and things like that. Today, agenda review, later on, tomorrow, I'm going to a grand opening business in the city of Clear Lake. Then I have on the 4th, an EPA meeting for the Superfund site that's over on Sulfur Bank. And they're starting to get some community input on that, and hopefully we can get some action, some good, strong action taken rather than just a little, little step. We need to take some larger steps. Later on that day, I will also be in the meeting with Supervisor Simon with the AG's office. Looking forward to that conversation, and depending on when that ends, I also have a CSAC phone call to get another update on COVID-19 vaccination and all that's going on from the state. At this moment in time, it looks like I have a meeting with Dr. Pace and our CAO, Carol Hutchinson. I am not 100% sure if that will occur or not, but that's on my calendar at this moment. That would be on Friday, and that's all I seem to have on Friday. And then Monday, setting up for this meeting, meeting with our CAO and another CSAC phone call to get updates on everything COVID. And just to let you know, the, the state as a whole is going through a lot of issues. And the counties as a whole are going through a lot of issues. A lot of people are asking for more vaccinations, a lot of people are asking for more equity. While Lake County does, is not immune to some of those problems, overall, we're in the mid-range. We're, we're not getting a huge amount of percentages that are being vaccinated compared to say like Mono County, who has a very small population, are close to 50% vaccinated. But we're also not at the bottom, like Inyo County, which was at like 7%, we're getting closer to about 20%. So we're definitely not doing bad, but just wanted to give you that update from the state. And that is my report. And that will put us in time for a 9:05 item, and we will go ahead and, or 9:06 item, and go ahead and open that up, 6.2, consideration of update on COVID-19. And I do not see Dr. Pace currently on my screen, there he is, just popped up. Dr. Pace, good morning.
Good morning, morning, Mr. Chair, Supervisors. Thank you for having us once again for the COVID update. So just the quick overview, as the cases are continuing to improve, and Sarah will talk about that in just a second. We're still in the purple tier and the numbers aren't quite getting us to the red tier yet, but we're getting closer, and the vaccine is continuing to roll out as fast as we get it in. We're, we're sending it on out, so we're getting approximately 2,000 doses this week that will be both for first and second doses. So, you know, just to give an idea, where it's more than we have been getting in the past, but we're still, you know, at 2,000 a week, we're, we're still many weeks away from getting where we want to be. So maybe Sarah can go ahead and give the update, and then I'll come back and talk about some of the specific issues.
Thank you, Dr. Pace, good morning, everyone. I'm going to give a quick update. Have positive news, like Dr. Pace said, indicators of reducing transmission at both the state level and in Lake County. And then we're going to review about 40 of the COVID deaths that we've identified in Lake County to help inform the vaccine strategy and thinking. And then we'll finish looking at our progress in Lake County as of yesterday. So testing continues to decline at the state level. Yesterday, about 244,000 new tests were reported. We continue to see the testing positivity decline, the 14-day average is 2.6%. This is incredibly positive news. Correspondingly, we see a decline in new cases identified. About 3,500 new cases were reported statewide yesterday. This is the lowest we've seen since early October, this is really promising news. Again, we continue to track at the state level, the variance, and there are a couple of concern, but statewide, down to 3,500 new cases is incredibly promising. Statewide, we've identified over 52,000 deaths from COVID. Just a note here, if you're looking at the graph on the right, you see over 1,000 deaths reported recently. Most of those were from LA County, they had done a review of deaths, and so they didn't all occur on that day, that was a result of a review of deaths of a couple months prior. Reducing impact in our healthcare system, about 5,400 COVID hospitalized patients were reported yesterday statewide, and about 1,500 of those were in the ICU. In Lake County, we've identified 51 new cases over the last seven days. This is the lowest number of cases we've seen over a week in a long time. Brings our total to about 3,100 cases total since the beginning of the pandemic. And we've identified there's been one more death in the last seven days. This purple bar here represents the week of February 14th through the 20th. Our near, our new tier assignment will be announced this afternoon by the state. This, like Dr. Pace said, keeps us in the purple tier due to our daily case rate. So our daily case rate for this new time period will be 11 per 100,000. It was about 15 per 100,000 last week, so we are continuing to decline. And our testing positivity in Lake County is also declining down to 4.9% to positive signs. And this is a busy table, so let me spend a few minutes walking through this and talking about why we looked at the data this way. So a couple of weeks ago, I did an analysis of, at the time, 39 COVID deaths among Lake County residents. And we know that congregate living settings, which I have abbreviated here as CLS, are, have been high-risk settings throughout the pandemic for deaths to COVID. And so in Lake County, we've identified 13 COVID deaths that were associated with congregate living settings. 12 of the 13 of these deaths were people who lived in skilled nursing facilities. And that's why statewide and in Lake County, we prioritized that, those populations to receive the first doses of the vaccine. And most of those people were white, non-Hispanic, 85% were white, non-Hispanic, and most of those people were 75 years in age of old and older. Then we looked at deaths that weren't associated with congregate living settings, because a different level of risk for exposure and death due to a variety of factors. And at the time, that was 26 deaths were associated with what I call community deaths. They weren't associated with congregate living settings. And the reason we did this is now that was, we move forward with vaccinations and into different priority populations, wanting to better understand who in Lake County has been most at risk for death to COVID. And so of these community deaths, or deaths not associated with the congregate living setting, about 58% of people were white, non-Hispanic, about 42% of people were people of color. And you'll see here, the age distribution is different, as we'd expect, from the deaths in the skilled nursing facility. So about 46% of people were over 75, 19%, 65 to 74, and about a third, 35% under 65. So we're going to look a little bit closer at those community deaths as, again, we move forward into different priority populations to better understand who those populations are. So here, we're looking at those community deaths, again, deaths not associated with the congregate living setting. And I'm, we're looking by race, ethnicity, and we're looking by age group. We know both are risk factors for a variety of reasons. So the majority of community deaths, about 58%, were among people who are white, non-Hispanic. And about half of them, 53%, are 75 and older. 33% were 65 to 74, and two of the deaths were among people or 13% under the age of 65. We have a different age distribution among people of color in Lake County. A little less than half of the deaths were among people of color. 36% were over the age of 75, and the majority are about 2/3 were under 65. So what this suggests, and I think is important to consider as we look at our vaccine strategy, is to ensure that we're reaching the populations most at risk for death and for severe outcomes like hospitalization. And as, you know, Dr. Pace has updated you on the priority populations, and will continue to do so. I think what we're looking at is as we've opened it up to people 65 and older, or we've reached, we've reached, and I'm about to show you, our success in reaching older people. But I think it's really important that we think about this population as well, that's under 65, that has not, for the most part, been eligible for the vaccine unless they've been in a particular occupation or employment group, and that this is an important group to target in terms of first doses for vaccine. So here's the update on our numbers. About 9,300 residents have received one dose. This is about 18% of the adult population. This is up about 900 doses since I last reported these on Thursday morning. And then about 4,200 residents, about 45% of people who've received their first dose have received both doses. So this is about 8% of the adult population, and this is up about 1,200 since Thursday morning. And so total doses administered as of last night, about 13,500 doses administered to Lake County residents. I think really important to, to, to know and to remember as we look at these data moving forward, at least for now, they don't include data or vaccines administered through Indian Health Service, the V, or the VA. And so when we look at our data, particularly by, and the reason for that is those are on different data systems. There is talk about integration of those systems. But at this moment, it does not include those doses, so it's important to remember that. Particularly when we look at some of the demographics of who have been vaccinated. So here, as of last night, 50% of Lake County residents over 75 and older have had their first dose. So just to walk through this table, that's about 2,645 people. We estimate that there's about 5,300 people in this age group in Lake County, which makes 50% of the population has received their first dose. About 40% of people, 65 to 74, have received their first dose. 8%, 55 to 64, 11%, 45 to 54. So we'll continue to track this over time, and we'll see this shift as we have different priority groups, whether by age or occupational status. And then here, we're looking at the race, ethnicity of people who've received their first dose in Lake County. So 16% of white, non-Hispanic residents and 8% of Latino residents have received their first dose. So a couple of things that I think are really important to note here. First, in a large part, these data, like in other counties, reflect the groups that were prioritized through the state guidelines. And as we move through the priority populations, I think we'll, we'll see this shift. But to date, we see that about 7,200 white, non-Hispanic residents have been, have received their first dose out of about 44,000 people, for about 16% of that population. For Latinos, we see about 1,100 people have been vaccinated out of about 14,200 in that population, for about 8%. Here, it's really important to note, again, these data are completely limited, but that they're not integrated with Indian Health Service data. So I think this is a dramatic undercount of Native Americans in the community that have been vaccinated. And then I'll say for the other racial, ethnic groups here, people who identify as other races or multiracial, about 16% have been vaccinated, 10% among black, Asian, black residents, 26% among Asians, and 81% around Native Hawaiian. So for these, these racial, ethnic groups where there are smaller populations in the county, the population estimates, these come from the US Census Bureau, the American Community Survey. And there are large margins of errors for these populations as these populations get smaller. So these denominators, these population estimates, a little less reliable, but I still think really important to, to report on progress among all racial, ethnic groups. And that is all I have, I believe, for today. And we'll continue to update on our progress, thank you.
Great, thank you, Sarah. So I think there's a couple of things I want to just emphasize after with what she said, and then I'll go into talking about the variants and the vaccine. So one is, is that we have been incorrect about the way we've been reporting the number of cases we need to have to go to move into the red tier. We were, to move from the purple to the red tier, it needs to be over 42 cases, but to move from, I'm sorry, to move, yeah, from the purple. Say that again, correct me, this is the confusing part.
Yeah, so what the California Department of Public Health did for small counties, recognizing that just a few cases can dramatically impact our daily case rate, is that if we were in the red tier, they allowed us to have up to 43 cases per week to stay in the red tier. And that's actually about 10, a daily case rate of about 10 per 100,000. But they are holding the line currently to move into the red tier. They're holding the line that we need seven per 100,000, which is about 31 cases per week. So I'll repeat that because I think it's a little confusing. So currently, to move So currently, to move into the red tier, CDPH is requiring that we have no more than thirty-one cases per week. And then there's some wiggle room to stay in it up to forty-three. But we had previously reported forty-three as the goal, and really, that's how you stay in the red tier. I hope that was.
Right, thanks. So, so the point of this is, is that we were saying forty-two would get us into the red tier before, but it's actually about thirty-one. The state, I believe, the governor's going to come out later today, and he's changing that framework. I think it's going to be based on, I don't know exactly what he's going to say, but I think it's going to be that once you get a certain number of people vaccinated in the county, that they're going to loosen it up, and it may come back to about the ten per a hundred thousand. But it's, so it's a moving target, things are changing all the time. And, but where we are at this moment right now is we need to get to about thirty cases per week to move into the red tier. There's two data points that are important. One is the positivity rate, and we are at the proper positivity rate for the red tier. The second is the case rate, and we're improving. We continue to move down, but it's going to be a little further than we thought. And we have to be in there for two weeks before we can actually switch to the red tier and open up indoor dining and some of that stuff. So that's one thing I wanted to emphasize. A second is, is what Sarah's talking about with tribal health is, is kind of significant because tribal health has gotten a lot of vaccine, and they've been very out there in terms of getting people vaccinated. So they vaccinated something like a thousand people now. And we're not getting credit for that in terms of the county numbers because it's going through a different pathway. They're working on it and trying to get that, that sort of lined up. But at this point, we're probably about a thousand people, somewhere around there, less than what we actually are in the county. So our numbers are actually better than what we're reporting there. The, there's some interesting data about the schools. So a lot of times, people are asking, how many people are declining the vaccine that are offered it? So how many people in the healthcare world, or in the education world, or just in the, in the community at large? You can see that about fifty percent of the seventy-five and older folks have been vaccinated now. But are the, are the, are the other fifty percent declining? Or they just haven't been able to get it together to be in there, or it's too many obstacles, or they're homebound, or what's going on? With the schools, we, there's something like thirteen hundred, fourteen hundred teachers and staff in the schools, in the K through twelve in Lake County. And about a thousand of them were interested in getting it and signed up for it. So, you know, that's something like, you know, about, I don't know, seventy-five percent or more that, that, I don't know that they all actually completed it, but they, they were interested and signed up for it, and so we were prepared to do that. So that's a, that's a round number of what one portion of the population was, was doing. And, you know, I think it's usually somewhere between about fifty and eighty percent. We, I saw an article come out the other day about the military. And in the military, because I think people are younger and healthier, and I'm not sure what all the reasons are, but it was a little under fifty percent of the people that were going ahead and getting the COVID vaccine. So it's probably somewhere between fifty and eighty percent of the population is going ahead with it. Well, one of the things we're seeing with this vaccine hesitancy is, is that people are often kind of holding back, watching their friends and family get it, and then if things go okay, then two, three, four weeks later, they're interested in getting it. I would encourage people not to take that strategy just because, you know, it's, the infection is still out there, so people are still getting sick. The, yeah, the, the last piece of this, just to comment on Sarah's pieces, was the Latino population is about eight percent has been vaccinated. The, in the community, it's about twenty percent of the population, so we would like to at least see it at that. And in terms of the impact of COVID, it's something like forty percent of the cases are Latino. So we're at about a quarter of where we'd like to be in terms of just that health equity kind of measure. So, yeah, so I wanted to just move on from that, but just to comment on those things. So one of the things is the variants. There's a, there's a fair amount of media play about the variants now. And I think it's just worth it to get an update. We are, there's currently these three variants of concern that the CDC has called out. These are the most worrisome ones where there's pretty clear evidence that it's more contagious and probably more dangerous. And that's the South African variant, the UK variant, and the Brazilian variant. The Brazilian variant has not been found in California yet, but the other two have. And we have not identified them in Lake County, but there's not a whole lot of testing going on in Lake County. The state kind of controls the genomic sequencing. And unless we have a specific concern, like somebody's gotten reinfected or something like that, we really can't get the genomic sequencing only. But they're doing kind of random testing, but they, at this point, I'm not aware of any of those being picked up in Lake County. But both of them are in the Bay Area. The, the South African and the UK one have been identified in the Bay Area. So the one that we are seeing around California a lot is called the B-1427 or B-1429, or they call it the California variant as well. This is now making up approximately half the cases in the Bay Area and in Southern California. That's, so they're still considering it a variant of interest, which is a lower level of concern. They have not clearly identified that it's more contagious or more dangerous. I just was on a call this morning where the latest information is they just did a fairly big study in the Bay Area, and they felt that it may be slightly more contagious, but they were actually somewhat reassured after this study. So that's the first good news I've heard about this one yet. But just so that people are aware, this is out there. The, the same approaches are what we're recommending, masking, maybe double masking, social distancing, avoiding large gatherings, especially indoors, and getting vaccinated. The vaccine, this vaccine, there doesn't seem to be any indication that this vaccine is not working against the California variant. And there, and even, even in the cases where there's some problems with the vaccine completely preventing infection from the variants, there's at least partial immunity. And so it's, it's, there's, from all evidence at this point, it's definitely worth getting the vaccine as soon as possible and preventing the spread. So moving on to the vaccine, like Supervisor Sabate was mentioning, there's a lot of changes going on at the state level. It's really, really moving fast. This is going to be a very chaotic month, I think, with a lot of these changes, and then I think things will settle down. They're moving to what they're calling a third-party administrator, a TPA. So they're, basically, the state is going to kind of take over, I mean, not the state, but this private entity, Blue Shield, is going to take over all the, the inventory and all the tiers and all the data and the appointments and everything. It's not clear exactly whether we're going to get staffing or other kinds of support. That's all still being worked out. Denise Pomeroy is going to be the county representative, really working with the state, TPA, kind of negotiations around the contract and everything. So she's going to be the, the point person for all that. But basically, what's starting to happen is the state's trying to standardize across the state and trying to get to where they could really move this through in a coordinated, kind of consistent way with feedback and where they understand what's going on because it's kind of chaotic with fifty-eight counties and all the different possibilities. But it makes it harder for a small county like us because we kind of have to fight a little bit harder to make sure that our interests are, are being well-represented. One of the big changes that's going to be happening is this change to a new appointment mechanism and a new software platform. They're calling it My Turn. This is the one we tried a couple of weeks ago. It didn't work very well, and so we shut it back down. But we're, it's, we're going to have to go on it. It's mandated. Other counties are now on it. It seems to be working a little bit better. But one of the things that they've kind of agreed to is that we're going to be able to prevent out of county, and people who don't live or work in the county, we're going to be able to keep them out of the vaccine sites, at least through March. After that, it looks like we're going to have to just let everybody in. But at least for the next couple of weeks, it looks like they've kind of been willing to compromise with us and let us do that. So at least we can focus on getting people in as there's still a limited supply of vaccine. I think the supply of vaccine is going to gradually improve over the coming weeks now. We are, the, this My Turn site is going to be better in terms of functionality, I think, when it finally settles down. It's going to be, you know, any of these things, when they roll them out, it's very bumpy for the first couple of weeks. But eventually, you know, a lot of the problems people have been having getting appointments or connecting with us about follow-up appointments and things like that, these are all because we're having to work around these clunky old systems and just trying to put people in place to try to plug the holes. And when there's a lot of folks calling and different needs, it's hard to do that. What's going to happen is we're going to kind of shift to a more automated mode. So you're going to have to go online and do it the state's way. We're not going to be able to do all these other kind of special things. They are going to have a phone line where people can call in and they get help doing it. But one of the things that they're, they seem to be requiring is an email and a phone number. So we haven't really worked out what that's going to be for people that don't have emails because they're trying to double verify people's identity. And so you have to have a cell phone and a, and the email address to be able to do it online, and that's going to be a problem. So these are the kind of things we're just going to be fighting with them about over the coming weeks. And I just encourage people to be patient. I think in the long run, probably by May, it's going to be pretty good. But for the next couple of months, it's going to be kind of bumpy and a little bit problematic. We're basically just having to do workarounds all the time for all these things, and those are going to disappear. But the value of a workaround is it makes it work better for people, but when they're gone, they're gone. And then you just have to deal with the system the way it is. So the, another part of what's going to happen with this state takeover is the, the phases and whose, whose in priority is going to be standardized across the state. So we've kind of been trying to focus on the most vulnerable folks in our county and trying to get those to the front of the line first because there's been so limited vaccine. We, as of yesterday, we are no longer able to do that. So at this point, starting yesterday, a press release, a couple of press releases went out about this. But in case people didn't see all that, we are now, the state guidelines are what we're adhering to. So if you qualify under the state guidelines, you can, you qualify for a vaccine in Lake County. Whereas before, we were trying to sort of tailor it and just make sure that we got the most vulnerable folks first. So that's over now. So at this point, anybody who was in Phase 1A, which is mainly the healthcare workers, educators, including childcare workers, preschool, and college, which we had not allowed to do, they're all eligible at this point. Emergency service workers, including food and, food service and ag workers, are all eligible now. And so they can, any of those folks can sign up on the, the links on the website. And if you can get an appointment, then come in. If, if you need to bring some kind of documentation of your status. So if you're sixty-five or older, you need to bring an ID with, with a birthdate. If you're a food service worker, you need to be, you're, bring your work badge and a, and a picture ID. If you're a farm worker, you need to have some kind of ID. So these are how we're going to do it, but we're not saying you can't do it if you're eligible on the state level. Starting on March fifteenth, there's going to be a big change. That's when the state says that people with chronic medical conditions will be eligible. They have a long list of certain conditions that make you eligible, and so you'll need to go on the website. I'm pretty sure it was in the press release last week too, but where they described that. If that's your situation, if that's how you're going to qualify, you need to get a, a note from your doctor or from your medical provider that says, yes, so-and-so qualifies for the vaccine under the current state guidelines. You don't need to get them to write down what your qualification is. We don't care about that. It's up to your medical provider. But that's how we're going to kind of verify people at the front gate. Don't make our, you know, poor screeners at the front gate when there's dozens of cars waiting have to determine whether your medical condition qualifies or not. You need to get some documentation from your medical provider. If you don't have a medical provider in the county, or you can't get that kind of letter, you need to write into the MOOC line, and I'll, I'll review these and make a list, and we'll put it up front. So I'll, I'll have to make some kind of determination about that because we don't want people to be excluded that don't have a medical provider. But we need to have some kind of verification because otherwise people sort of scam the system a little bit. So the second appointments have been a problem. The follow-up appointments, where with the Moderna, it's four weeks after, have been a bit of an issue. And we apologize for that. Partly what happened is we thought we were going to be able to make those appointments at the first visit, but then, you know, we've changed the sites, we've changed the days, we've, everything's kind of moved around. We've been calling people, but oftentimes, it's, you know, within a day or two of the time. And if we don't get in touch with them, people are getting frustrated. So what we're doing now is we are opening, we're putting the links on the webpage. So one, one thing, the first, I think the first important thing is, is if you got the Moderna vaccine, the recommended time is four to six weeks after the first dose. So we were shooting for four weeks after, twenty-eight days after, but you still have two more weeks. There's no problems. You don't need to worry that there's any kind of the spoilage or lack of effect or anything like that. And it's almost for sure, it can go on much longer than two weeks after, but that's what the current recommendation is. So between four to six weeks is when we're targeting. If you, you should be getting a call or an email from us. If that doesn't happen, you can call or email to the MOOC line, and that's the best way to do it. Just leave a message with your name, the date you got your vaccine, and some contact information, and we'll get back to you. But the quickest, the most direct way is just to go on, get the links on the webpage and sign up for it. You don't need to talk to anybody, and then we'll just come in. You will have to have your, your initial card, the card from your first vaccine, to come in because we don't want people scamming the system by coming in on the second, second appointment website. So you got to have your card, your first, the card from your first shot when you come in and do it. But that's the easiest way. If you can't get in that way and haven't gotten a call and you need to be called, email us or call us at the MOOC line. So the new, there's a new vaccine that just got approved last Friday, the Johnson &amp; Johnson. They're also calling it the Janssen. It's, it's a one-shot vaccine. It seems to be pretty much as effective. The current thinking is that any of the three vaccines that are available are equivalent in impact, and people should just get whatever one they can. Depending on what we get delivered, either the Pfizer or Moderna at this point, that's what you get. You don't get a choice. So on, on a given day, if it's Pfizer, you get Pfizer. On the next day, if it's Moderna, you get Moderna. And then for the second dose, you have to get the same one you got the first time. But people are kind of wanting to choose, pick and choose. From a medical point of view, there doesn't seem to be any advantage or disadvantage over them. The only difference is going to be this new one, the Johnson &amp; Johnson, is only going to be one dose. And maybe it's a little bit less effective, but at this point, there's no indication that that's, that's going to make any real difference in the real world. We don't have any of that yet. They're supposedly going to start shipping some to California later this week. I think the state's going to give specific guidance about who we should be giving it to. Most likely, it's going to be people that are hard to get to a second time, you know, farm workers or people that are more migratory, homeless folks, things like that. But we don't have that guidance yet. So the vaccine sites are going well. There's two days a week in Lakeport at the Drive-In Theater, two days a week at Red Bud Park in Clear Lake. You know, we're getting somewhere between four hundred and eight hundred to a thousand people a day through there between first and second doses. It's, it's quite an operation. There's a lot of people going through. Some days, it goes really smooth. Friday, we had the tents blow over, and we had to stop everything while we were reworking everything for about forty-five minutes. So there was a big holdup on there. But, you know, all in all, we've got an incredible group of people that are working on this. You know, just to give a, just a sense of what's going on, there's like basically twenty-five to thirty people out there, four days a week, six to eight hours a day. So it's pretty much, there's thirty people doing a full-time job to set up these vaccine sites. These are people that, you know, they're either health department staff, which have been, you know, completely overworked for a year now, or folks from other departments around the county. You know, probation's been a big help, social services has been a big help. We've had a lot of help from other, other agencies around the county, from the local, the, the city law enforcement and things. And then there's all these retired nurses, retired docs, student nurses, you know, all kinds of volunteers coming out to help. You know, we've been very, very fortunate for this. And when you go out there, just kind of recognize there's like a whole team of people working basically a full-time job to provide this vaccine site for the community in addition to their other jobs and everything. We're, we're now starting to hire temp people, and we're starting to try to do other things. But it's, it's quite a, quite a coordinated effort. And, you know, our public health nursing staff and our emergency services staff and the other folks have been really, really stepping up for this, and so really appreciate that. The, and it looks like these are going to be the models that we're going to use going forward. Now, even when the state comes in, I think what they're going to do is just sort of work with us around the current model. So my thinking is, and, you know, we'll see, they, they get the final say, but is that we're just going to keep moving forward like this, providing at this kind of level and be expanding and contracting depending on need and vaccine availability. Southern Adventist are also providing vaccine and doing a great job. Uh Lakeview Clinic's doing some, uh tribal health is doing some, Safeway's doing some, North Lake Pharmacy is doing some. And so with the new uh arrangements going on with the state, they're gonna, the ones that wanna continue moving forward are gonna have to do some more direct involvement with the state. They're not gonna be coming through us. So I think that's gonna change over the coming month. But uh it's gonna get more complicated basically to be a provider in the community for this. So you know, I think that's the general overview of the vaccine. There's just a couple more things I wanna say and then I'll stop. I'm sorry this is going on so long. But um the tiers, like I said, like I mentioned earlier, I think the governor's coming out today to make some adjustments to the tier system that's gonna incorporate vaccine, um how much of the population is vaccinated? And when more of the population is vaccinated, they'll uh relax some of the restrictions. Uh one of the things to just for people to be aware of is that, you know, I might have mentioned this last week, but in the nursing homes, the um uh everybody has gotten vaccinated. Now, all the residents and over half the staff have gotten vaccinated. And since that's happened, there have been no new cases in the nursing homes. So you saw in the earlier death data that a third of all the deaths in the county have been in the nursing homes. And you know, it was kind of a nightmare this fall with what was going on there. We're just those, the staff were scrambling to keep on top of things. The um, you know, pe- patients couldn't visit their family, they couldn't do any activities. And now, since they've been vaccinated, there's been no new cases. And so they're starting to loosen up on the, on the visitation, on the activities. Things are starting to loosen up quite a bit. And I think that's really uh kind of a uh view into what may be coming in the coming months if we get enough of the population vaccinated here. So folks that are reluctant or kind of holding back, the sooner you can get vaccinated, the sooner we can get this to you, we can get more and more folks vaccinated, the better off it's gonna be. Um I did wanna mention a little bit about schools because they're, it's so important um for our society. Basically, uh Brock wasn't able to be in here today because I was gonna ask him to do it. But basically, the schools are starting to move forward to opening with hybrid models. There's a couple of the school districts that have um been open, were open all last fall and have been, have reopened a couple of weeks ago and seem to be doing fine. Then the other school districts in terms of the kindergartens, uh I'm sorry, K through six are opening up now i- in a hybrid model. And the ones that haven't done it yet are gonna be doing it next week, I believe. Uh the middle schools and the high schools are waiting until we get into the red tier and then they will be able to do the same thing. And I think they're all prepared to do it once we are, are into the red tier. So all in all, you know, we are moving forward with the schools. And, but it's been a huge impact on the, on the county. And uh I really am sad about what's happened here for the kids over the last year. So just in terms of um of uh kind of the conclusions here, with the vaccines moving, the state's changing a lot. We're, you know, it's gonna be a very much a moving target. And once you figure out how to do something, it's gonna change in the coming weeks. I'm, I'm sorry about that. We don't really have a whole lot of control about it. With the weather improving and the, the vaccination rates improving and the, and the case rates dropping, I think we're gonna be moving better, more into normalcy. People can be outside doing things more. And I think we're, we're through the worst now. The, the variants do have a, raise a question mark in that. But I think the general consensus by the experts is, is that things should gradually improve, maybe not as fast as they would have without the variants. But some, there's a few experts kind of predicting future surges. But at this point, we're not really seeing that. I think in the coming weeks, the data will, will help us see that. So the schools are getting better and, you know, we're just kind of hopefully moving into a, a better time now. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pace, for your very in-depth report. I saw that Supervisor Crandall had his hand up during that report, so I'll start with you.
Thank you, thank you. Uh Dr. Pace, I just wanted to touch base uh because you've given us numbers on, on the county's vaccinations and wanted to see if I can collaborate uh and get the numbers from tribal health or something like. Is there, is there something hindering that from them communicating that or with you or? Not sure.
So uh it's not about, you know, tribal health has been a very good partner and so they're communicating well. The um, um, the issue is, is the downloading into the state data system. And so uh Ernesto, I just talked to them yesterday and he said, you know, that their, their IT people are working on it, trying to get it in. But it's a, it's really uh, you know, IT kind of question of, because they're getting their vaccine through a different pipeline through IHS. We're getting, the state has a certain way that they wanna do it and they're not very flexible. But you know, since they're getting their vaccine through IHS, through the federal government, they don't have to kind of report the same way. And so it's just, it's sort of like uh talking two different languages, you know?
I understand. It's just uh, cuz it would, I know that they serve not just the native community. They serve whoever is a um patient at the tribal health. And I, I've been there because I take my mother quite frequently and uh I see a lot of folks that are, are getting vaccinations. And so I know those numbers would help towards, you know, you mentioned that if we are, the more the people in the county are vaccinated, the more we can go ahead and start moving forward to uh different uh lessening restrictions. And so I just, you know, I wanna do what I can to help uh facilitate that if possible. So if there's anything I can do to figure out how to get pressure or get information from IHS, I can, you know, be a part of that.
Well, I think it's a really important point because when we get, when the governor comes out today, when he starts talking about um, I think it's gonna be a percentage of the population vaccinated. It'll, this data will make a huge difference because it may make the difference between pushing us over the line where we could uh open up or not. So, but it's not gonna count. They're not gonna count it if it's not in the state system. So yeah, if you have some um ability to encourage them to move that along, that's probably a good idea.
I don't think I do, but I'll do my best.
Okay, anybody uh from the board have any questions or comments for Dr. Pace?
No, I just wanted to add on with EJ there. EJ, I think uh we have a call. I think we do have a path to at least get this message up to uh the governor's office. So I'll reach out to you, EJ and uh Dr. Pace. And we'll see if we can get something set up this week to talk about those numbers uh being reported at the state level from IHS. So uh I think I have an idea and um I'll coordinate with that. Uh I did wanna just say that uh, you know, a- as EJ said, I know they're doing uh both native and non-native uh, you know, at the uh tribal health clinic. But I just wanna, you know, as always, uh Dr. Pace talks about it every week, the volunteers uh that have been working tirelessly, all of our public health department and everything. I just want to say how greatly appreciative I am. And I know the community is for everybody's been able to get vaccinated at this point. Even though it's frustrating, we do have people getting it done and working through that process. So at this point, that, that's my comment for you. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor, Supervisor Piscott.
So I, I really appreciate this thorough presentation and you, your team has been working so hard and volunteers that have been assisting with the vaccinations. I um, my question is about the Equity Committee. Are we not gonna need that any longer if we're going strictly to the state guidelines? And if that's the case, then um, you know, what would be the process for the people that call us lobbying or, you know, have want to um wanna have their position heard? So will we not have any local control on that any longer?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I should have mentioned that. So that, they're, they're calling it the Ethics Committee, the Vaccine Ethics Committee. Um the Ethics Committee has been meeting weekly. They made again today. Last week, the recommendations were pretty much unchanged from the week before because we hadn't had any vaccine because of the, the weather interruptions with the supply. So um people are writing into the MOOC line and we're sending it over. So they will bring up those uh concerns that were, have been brought up during the last week again. I think that's a question in my mind, uh how, whether they're gonna wanna keep meeting with this new kind of focus from the state. I think, you know, um, so I don't know. They're, they'll, they'll meet today and I'm sure that'll be part of the discussion. I think at this point, what I would encourage people to do is keep writing into the MOOC line. So if you get something and you um uh think it's appropriate to go that way, send it to me or send it to the MOOC line and we'll have it go into them. You know, I don't know exactly wh- wh- what the role of this committee should be because where it got started was to work with helping us navigate on the local level. And now we have a lot less control over that now and we'll have even less. By the end of the month, it's gonna be basically when the, when the switch flips on, people can uh come in from out of county and all kinds of things. So I don't, you know, I don't really, I don't know, you know. So, but I, I'm sure that, I'm glad you brought that up and that's been in my mind to, to kind of uh encourage that conversation today in the group. And uh, but I would say right now, for people that have concerns or have um some uh opinions they wanna voice, to send that into you or to me or to the MOOC line and we'll get it to the committee.
Thank you Supervisor, Supervisor Scott.
Um no real question today. Just thank you, Dr. Pace, for your um, your update and thank you for doing this twice a week. It's really helped the public become informed of what's going on. Um I just think they feel more comfortable. And then going back to um our vaccination numbers, I, I think it's incredibly important that we have all those numbers. So if that's something that we need to bring back to the board um as a letter to the governor that, you know, even though the numbers from tribal health are not being included in our Calif, in our numbers because they don't, the systems don't work, um he needs to figure out a way that those numbers are included. So um uh Supervisor Crandall and Simon, if you're unable to, you know, get that through the, your avenues, please let's bring it back to the board and let's make the governor aware that these are high numbers for us when we have such a low population. So we need to make sure that those are being counted.
Thank you Supervisor. And, and just to finish uh the statement you just made, yes, we have a low population for a county, but we have a high population of Native Americans in comparison to other areas as well, a high population of veterans per capita compared to other counties. So we need to make sure those numbers are counted for because they're, they're such a major part of our population here. Thank you for all those comments and questions again, Dr. Pace. Thank you for your uh presentation as well. Sarah, uh I appreciate the uh data that was presented uh to kind of get a review and, and a look at why we're doing what we're doing and why we're uh prioritizing certain groups over others. Granted, it's not completely different than what the state has offered, but at least we're uh providing some data to uh, to the reasons why we're doing what we're doing. And I think it's important to always have data to support the actions that we take. I'm wondering if it's possible um to continue getting an updated view of that percentage of um every ethnic group and percentage of populations that are receiving the vaccine, just to see how that's moving along, uh if that's possible in the upcoming uh we- weekly reports that you provide to the board. And if possible, uh we got a percentage of the, that specific group of how much of them were vaccinated. Can we also get the percentage when compared to um their actual population count? So let's say, for example, African-Americans are about four percent of our population. What percentage of that four percent has actually received the uh, uh the dosages? Just to kind of get an idea and a glimpse of more of that equity uh and, and how that's working out. And granted, it may not change the deployment, but at least it can provide us with a, a glimpse of how good we're actually doing when it comes to the equity. And, and uh I said this to the state yesterday. I don't think there's anybody with any mal-intent. Uh but equity is a huge problem across the board. And I think it's just the system that we have and the processes that we've been through. The uh, the CLS, the Congregate Living uh situation. I'm sure that's not what S stands for. But um that, that, those are mainly uh people who are white. And so that's why it would seem that we're vaccinating white people more than uh people of color. Or same thing with healthcare providers. Uh and so the way that we started, it skews and looks like a very uh unequitable process in how it is that we're deploying it. But I will say, I was on the phone with the state yesterday uh and I gave them a, an earful that based on the data that I've collected from CDPH, the poorest counties are some of the lowest in the uh vaccination rates and the wealthy counties are some of the highest. And yet, when you also look at deaths to cases, so the ratio of death rates in each county, and when you look at the case rate based on cases to actual population for each county, those with the highest case rates and those with the highest death rates are also some of the lowest vaccinated counties in the state of California. Something's wrong with that. And, and it's, it's one thing to know it, but it's a different thing to take action to change it. And I feel that uh some of these things are so deeply embedded in our systems uh that they are difficult to change. And again, there's no mal-intent in, in anything that's happening, but it, it just, it, it reveals the problems that we have uh that are greater than just COVID nineteen. And I think those are important things to make sure that we pay attention to so that as we have the opportunity to make systemic changes uh that we make those changes happen so that that's not the way that things happen again if we find ourselves in a similar, parallel type of situation in the future. It's really sad that Indian Health and uh our veteran systems do not communicate together, let alone communicate with our overall uh care's system that we're using for um keeping track of the uh vaccine. It just seems that that would have been something important that they kept a track of. And also, you talked of the my turn coming from the state, just on my phone call with the state yesterday. Uh Kings County, which is one of the uh highest populations for agricultural Latino populations, has one of the lowest levels of uh vaccination rates. And yet, the majority of their vaccine appointments are going to neighboring counties from people coming in. So they're still having problems with specific uh tailoring of you get this many vaccines based on your populations and then other populations coming in and getting the vaccine. And I just, uh that, that, I hope that we can continue to apply that we need to check IDs. And if you're not from Lake County or you don't work here in Lake County based on the way that we're working the system, uh that, sorry, but this is, this is not the way it's gonna work. So when it comes to Blue Shield, I hope that they collaborate and not just come in and take over. And I hope that they can keep reporting to us rather than just directly reporting back to the state. They are here in our community. Uh they should be reporting to us uh and, and letting us know what their actions are here. It just uh, I, I'm, I'm concerned of how this is all gonna work out. You said something about um nineteen hundred. I just wanted to check your numbers here. You said about nineteen hundred educators or people, staff working in education? Is that the correct number, nineteen hundred?
No, I said thirteen to fourteen hundred.
Okay, okay, so I was wrong in hearing that. Okay, so uh that percentage looks good. And I know that it's high across the board for educational staff throughout the state. It's the other uh sectors of the uh economy where it's not necessarily always that high. Let me see, going through my stuff here. Can you uh provide two pieces of information if you have it? Number one, how does somebody get an appointment? Where do they go? What website and what phone number in case they don't have access to the internet?
Okay, uh yeah, that's um, so the um, the best way to do it, the most efficient way to do it is to go to our website, the, the Health Department website, Lake County Health Department, and on there will be links. So if it's for a first appointment, you go on and get on the link uh there and, and sign up. If it's a second appointment, it's a different link. The press release went out yesterday morning or yesterday afternoon and it also went out uh la- end of last week with all the specifics on there so people can look those up. But um if uh basically, the way this wor- the way it's designed to work is on an internet-based um appointment platform, on online appointment scheduling, which is a drag for people that don't have computers or don't have good internet access or are older or, you know, English isn't their first language and they're not good with the computer. All those things can be an obstacle and there's a lot of those obstacles in Lake County. So we do have um some phone lines you can use, especially so kind of the way we've done it. And again, this is all in the press release. But the way we've sort of set it up right now is the general information line is two-one-one. So you can get general information there, but they're not gonna set you up an appointment. If you need help with an appointment, setting up an appointment because you don't have good internet access or you can't navigate it, if you're a senior, you can call this number nine-nine-three-four-six-four-four. And they have like five or six people working on the lines. If you can't get through, it sounds like there's been a lot of trouble getting through. People ought to leave a message because they do call back everybody who calls and tries to work with them later on, you know, by the end of the day. There, it's the, a lot of the folks at Social Services, they've been a huge help and they've been making hundreds of calls. by the end of the day. There it's the, a lot of the folks at Social Services, they've been a huge help and they've been making hundreds of calls for us to do this. If you're a a farm worker, so we have a special farm worker line sort of or a Latino, you know, bilingual, bicultural line where this is through the folks that at Lake County Office of Education that are helping us. And those, there's a couple of different numbers, two six two four one six two, two six two four one five three, two six two four one five nine. So those are, they're gonna have staff there specifically to work on it on Fridays. But if people call at other times during the week, I think they'll get a call back too. But so those are ways to navigate in if you're from those specific groups. But if you need to get in and you're not, it's not working, call our MOOC line and it it will get you through. So if you can't get through to somebody, leave a message or email us and we will get back to you. We're, we're very interested in reaching back. I think there's been some problems. We've had some kind of internal problems with communication. So I think people have called the nine nine three number and they get sent to the MOOC line, the MOOC line sends them back. So I think people have had that very, very frustrating experience of either not getting a person or you get a person and they send you someplace else and you can't get through. I think we've streamlined that. And but one of the big things you can do is is if you're able to navigate online, just go to the link and deal with that. That's the quickest and easiest way to do it. If you can't get an appointment, if there's no appointments, that's because we don't have, we don't know how much vaccine we're gonna have next week. So we can't open the appointments up until we get that together. So we we're only working just a couple of days at a time because we don't know how much vaccine we're gonna have next time to basically how many appointments to have. We don't wanna make appointments for people that can't get in because we don't have vaccine. This is all gonna completely change. Once we go to my turn, all these will be eliminated. And uh they're gonna, you're gonna just go online and do it their way. And if that doesn't work, you can try to call them, but it sounds like it's gonna be more frustrating when you go to the my turn. I know people have had problems with this setup, but we're a lot more high-touch, more willing to work with you here with our local folks than they're gonna be with my turn, but that's where it's going.
Appreciate the level of detail. And the reason I was asking that is I see from time to time that we have some open appointments left over uh and that uh public health is putting out messages to the public, hey, we have open appointments, please make an appointment. So I wanna make sure everybody's aware of all of those pu- uh possible links. Uh another question I have for you, and I spoke to you about this over the past week, is I'm concerned, well, not concerned, but I'd love to see uh more of our pharmacies sign on to uh start receiving the vaccine so they can start putting uh vaccines in arms. I don't see a pharmacy in South Lake. I don't see a pharmacy in the North Shore. I see a lot throughout Lakeport area and then Adventist Health and then that's it. Um so what is the process that a pharmacy, they have to sign up before they contact you, I believe is the process? Can you uh maybe describe it uh so that those who own pharmacies or us, we can uh provide that information to our pharmacies? Uh so we can try to get um more uh localized vaccination sites for those that don't have something very close by.
Yeah, well, that would be ideal. So that's a great way to get your free vaccine is to go to the pharmacies. We reached out, my understanding was we reached out to all the pharmacies in the area to see who was interested. And we didn't, you know, I mean, it's a pretty big lift and uh uh we didn't get a whole lot of uh uptake at the time. Now, I think there's more interest. The problem is, is with the state taking over this this thing, there there's a lot more requirements. Before, we would just get the vaccine and share it with the pharmacy and, you know, kind of work it out. That's, that's being eliminated. So there, everybody who's going to do it moving forward has to sign up with my turn. And um so if somebody's interested, they can just email me and we'll give them the the information on how to do that. But it's, you know, it's gonna require a certain level of um willingness to jump through the hoops, basically. Uh if somebody, if we would love, the more people we can get doing this, the better. But what it's gonna do is the pharmacy will be working directly with the state. They won't be coming through us. So right now, we're getting a lot of vaccine and then we redistribute it around the county. That's, that's being eliminated as an option. And they're gonna have to order, to order directly from the state and put the data in directly. And and if they don't do it the way they like it, they're gonna be axed. So it's a, so you know, if anybody that wants to do it, if they, they should just go look on my turn or go through the CDPH website. But if they can't figure out how to do that, have them contact me and we'll, we'll hook them up.
Perfect. And I know that uh Lake Pharmacy, they said you did reach out. They weren't prepared at the time to be able to do that level of uh service to their customers. Uh but now they're ready to start moving forward and they're working on getting that. So hopefully they'll do uh the South Lake Pharmacy as well, uh which is over in Hidden Valley. And uh maybe we can get some more because I think it's important to have as many possible sites uh versus centralized sites, which make it difficult for some. We know that uh uh mobility is an issue for many of our populations. So the closer we can get it to them, the better. Uh just wanted to say that I'm really happy to hear about the governor's potential change. I know that uh I sent an email to Dr. Pace. I had advocated that they add the variable of how many people have been vaccinated, that it made no sense to continue in the tiered system with the new variable that was not being accounted for. Uh especially since at the beginning, uh we had like a forty percent positivity rate because we were basically testing people who were sick. Then we started testing a lot of people just to kind of check in and see where the virus was. Very much lower than our positivity rate, but I'm feeling that at one certain point, we'll go back to only testing those that are sick rather than continuing this uh level of uh testing because so many people are vaccinated, those people don't wanna get tested any longer. Uh so we have to figure out how to add that variable of the vaccination rate into the tiered system. Sounds like that's what the state is planning to do. Uh I will reach out as well through my avenues uh that I've had that I feel has been uh has positive results to try and make sure that our veteran and Indian health information is um collated with all the other information that has been going through uh the other healthcare facilities that we have around the lake as well as public health so that we can make sure that number is correct. Uh the number thing is an issue for me because it it we we talked about the vaccination rates, but also um it it's just the state has continuously had different numbers uh than us. For instance, I go to CDPH, it says we've done forty-six thousand tests. I go to our public health, it says we've done twenty-six thousand tests. So uh un- unfortunately, there's a lot of data discrepancy between what we have and what they have. And we need to get to a better point where we can agree with what the state has. And if that, the state tells us we can't go in a direction that we think we should go, that becomes a problem and we need to make sure that we have something a little bit better. So I'll, I'll work on those things with the state as well and see if we can get more to an agreeable um status. Uh I'm done with all of my comments. Thank you for uh letting me speak for such a long time. Any other comments from the board before I open it up for the public? Okay, Jake, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room and see if there's any public comments on our COVID nineteen update from Dr. Pace.
All right. I sent a unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Hi, it's Denise Pomeroy, the director here at the Health Department. I just, uh Chair Savati, I just sent you the link for the providers that they can go online if we wanna get that posted in the chat or somewhere. Um that is the link that they can go and get all the information and sign up and everything. So just wanted to let you know. Thank you much.
Okay. Anyone else have a public comment for this agenda item?
Hi, I'm Kimberly Eler, E H L E R. And I had a few things, uh questions I wrote down. And uh Department of Education, that's what I wrote down because, and then you went right into uh the COVID. So why not allow separate cultural populations to privately count cases?
Hold on a second. Okay, I I gotta run. I'm in the supervisor's meeting, so I gotta go.
I have a few things, actually. And this latest one, I have a question for that too. Which one do you want me to start with?
Go ahead and start with your first question.
Okay. Why not separate cultural populations to privately count cases of COVID cases? Why not report to the health departments independently? In uh Indian slash tribal health is privately independent, not connected to any state or county, interlocking algorithm, computer programs, privacy issues? Why not compare ratios independently so that we don't uh accidentally cause a disparity between different cultural people? And who, how, and when you're counting people that aren't from Lake County, are you also counting uh migrant farm workers who are hard to count? And um do they have a separate, like the tribal health or one entity? Do we have a a a section that is Hispanic entity as well?
Dr. Pace, would you like to respond to any of that? And I will just start off by saying that all of the numbers that we have are slightly imperfect because populations move all the time. Uh they're based on on census data, which is again, an estimate a lot of times because it's been a long time since we finalized the previous census. And the latest one from twenty twenty has not necessarily been fully updated and implemented. Um so yes, it's very tough to know the exact numbers of our population, uh but we base it on what the best estimates are available to us.
I have a a little bit of advice. Now, the census information of twenty, oh, I'm sorry, honey.
Dr. Pace?
No, well, it sounds like she's got um a a point she's trying to make. But I think overall, it's a good, a good suggestion that we are trying to separate things out as uh so that we get a clear sense of which groups are having uh higher rates of infection or lower rates of vaccine so that we can try to really address that. Um the migrant question is uh, we're just now at the point where some folks are coming in from out of the county now to uh to be working in the, in the different um crops. And uh that's gonna be a a whole different focus on how to, how to help those people stay safe and how to vaccinate them because, you know, I mean, the thing is, is you can't really separate people out. The way this, the way infectious disease like this works is if somebody's in the community that's infected, it it impacts everybody. And so if we're not taking care of certain segments of the population, it's gonna impact everybody, but.
I have a question. May I interject while I can remember how little brain problem? Okay, the question is this. Now, the people that you wanna vaccinate, but the, you know, for the greater good of the community, the migrant farm workers, they're in a section, will they be um mandatorily vaccinated by the county health department in any way? Will they have a choice? Or are you gonna start vaccinating people against their will?
There's no interest in vaccinating anybody against their will. There's no pressure to do that. Um this is totally voluntary.
Okay, so um when you're going in and you're counting the, the people from like, I mean, that's gonna be hard to count, actually, from the migrant farm workers. That was one of the hardest things on the census. A lot of things are a lot easier to count. And I just wanna say, if you do wanna look up the census, all the information is on the internet, what they got so far. And they've done a pretty accurate count to some despairing communities. I can tell that for sure. Now, I have one more question. I think that answers my question. I got enough to go on there. You guys have a great day. And I I have another question. It doesn't relate though. I was kind of worried about Upper Lake.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to interrupt you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
For the rest of the public to ask questions. We have a team limit.
Hey, guys, go ahead. Have a good day.
Oh, or not. Um.
But I got an appointment.
Jake, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room and see if there's any further public comment.
All right. I have sent a unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, doesn't sound like there's anybody left in the Zoom room that has a public comment. And from what I saw, that other lady outside is leaving. If she comes back, uh Sam, let us know, please. Let's bring it back to the board. Any final comments before we uh get finished with this uh agenda item? Okay, Dr. Pace, thank you very much for everything that you're doing. And I know that uh those uh uh vaccine clinics are are looking well organized and quite busy. Uh and I appreciate everybody's work uh in making that happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we have ten twenty-four. We're going to move on to our nine forty-five AM item.
So I just, Savati, you did skip public input, the nine oh five item?
Oh, I sure did. Look at that. Thank you so much. Uh so let's go back to six point one, public input. Anyone have any comments or questions to uh the board, which we can't answer uh because of the Brown Act? And uh that have nothing to do with any of our agenda items. Jake, if we can open up the Zoom room, please.
Yes, I have sent a unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you supervisor for keeping me in check. Uh let's move on to item six point three, nine forty-five AM, consideration of ad hoc committee promoting tolerance, respect, equity, and inclusion. So as of last week, we read a proclamation which also had some action items. I wanna thank uh our CAO, Carol Hutchinson, for putting this together, the memo for us uh and and discussing with me what our process will be to move forward. Uh since the proclamation was brought to us by both Supervisor Crandall and Supervisor Scott, I thought it would just be correct to put both of those supervisors uh on that committee. Uh I also uh believe that some of this, and it was brought to our attention last week, uh was due to some of the um uh feelings and and thoughts of what had occurred in Minneapolis with George Floyd, with Breonna Taylor and others. So I wanted to make sure and invite law enforcement to also have a voice in that committee. Um and then open it up for, and I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it was for other public members so that there's a total of seven folks on that committee. Uh so that is the um agenda item in front of us. And any comments or questions or suggestions from the board?
So I guess my only question would be, they would just fill out the application that we have online to be a a member of this board? And then this board will go through and pick out the four community members, correct?
That's, that's my thoughts and beliefs, yes. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I might add that following your adopting the proclamation last week, we did get inquiries from several folks who have a strong interest in serving.
Any other comments or questions from the board before I open up to the public?
I I just wanna thank Supervisor Crandall and Supervisor Scott for stepping up uh to get this thing moving forward and the other community members. So I think it's a good project. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Jake, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room and see if we have any comments. And this is on the um item of creating the committee.
All right. I've sent a unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. Uh I do have, uh I just received a a comment on my phone asking, what about city members? Uh is this something that we wanna look at across all jurisdictions where this would impact all of Lake County? Or are we looking specifically uh to tailor some action met for the county of Lake itself as an agency? And and what jurisdiction we hold? Do we wanna look at offering two seats for the cities or just make it public and have those city members be able to apply as a member of the public? Just asking the two supervisors.
I would love to see the cities involved in this and not take up the four seats of uh the community members. I think this needs to be a broad, open committee um that covers all of Lake County, not just the unincorporated areas.
So are you suggesting uh expanding it to nine and then having four public, uh two county, two cities, one law enforcement?
Yes.
What does the rest of the board think of that?
I think that's good, including all governments that are located in Lake County. And obviously, I'll speak too on behalf of, uh there are seven tribal nations that are uh in the county also. So uh whether or not there's a complete seating of, you know, all seven, but a representation of the Native American uh government and uh the folks in the county, if we're gonna be opening that up, I just throw that hat in the ring also uh for our tribal, tribal nations here uh locally also.
I, I.
But I am in support of the cities, obviously. Absolutely.
I I appreciate that comment, Supervisor Simon. Um as oftentimes, we say local government and we limit it to just the cities and the county uh when obviously we know very well here, uh some of us intimately, that there are other local. when obviously, we know very well here, some of us intimately, that there are other local governments in the county, not just those three jurisdictions. And so seeing how this is all about tolerance and equity and inclusion, that maybe this is a point we can make the change. My only hesitance is that could be adding up to a maximum of seven more seats if each one is allowed a seat. Do we want to look at, how would you see that working correctly?
You know, obviously, that is the question. You know, for each tribal nation, we have our own governments, our own operations as it goes. I know that, I really go this to the Blue Ribbon Committee was able to incorporate, EJ, if you could, you know, talk a little bit more about that. I think we kind of have a structure. Obviously, I think it's the EPA directors, I think, that are working on the Blue Ribbon Committee. But, you know, I'm not sure. At least having one or two seats is an opportunity, I think, to start that inclusion. You know, maybe not all governments want to do that, but just a general discussion. So I would see it from a point, I think, from our tribal communities, I think, representation. A seat at the table is always the conversation. And so at least one or two seats might be an opportunity to start there. Don't have the answers, haven't talked with all the other leaders in the county. But as a suggestion, that's the way I would go. Because you don't want to get the thing over burdensome with agencies.
Agreed. Thank you very much. Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, I think the idea too can be, once we establish the two cities along with the other four members and law enforcement, in the initial meeting, we invite all seven tribes and kind of let them decide how they want to choose representation, you know, whether it be North Lake, South Lake, however they decide or something like that. It might be a possibility. I'm just throwing out ideas off the top of my head. I know a lot of times tribal governments are going to want their seat regardless. And Supervisor Simon is right, the EPA directors are the representatives for the Blue Ribbon Committee. So in this, I would think it'd either probably be the chair, vice chair, or even the administrator at times as they represent the tribal government. So not sure. I think that might be a way we initialize this, is invite all seven the first time, allow them to specify how they want to represent. They may even, we have to also be ready that they may all want representation on their own. So just giving you some insight on my experience with tribes.
Supervisor Scott?
I am open to whatever we feel is best as a community. If we want to open it up to all seven, I'm willing to go that route and see how it shakes out. I think we get too many members, it may get hard to come to a conclusion. But I definitely don't want to limit seats at the table.
Okay. I have an idea. I think that we limit ourselves to our thinking because we have two cities and it's easy to meet with what our definition of local governance is, which is the county and two cities. But we should be looking at other counties that have a large amount of other cities. Thank you. That have a large number of cities. And how do they create a countywide multi-jurisdictional committee without the problem of having too many people at the table where then it's difficult to get anything done? So I think that we could look at some advice from those counties and see how that could work. What if we looked at expanding it to a maximum of 11 folks, providing two seats for the county, two seats for the cities, two seats for tribal, one for law enforcement, and four for public members? And then you figure out through your processes how and who fills those two seats? What are your thoughts on that?
I'm looking to Supervisor Crandall.
Well, I think it might be, I mean, that might work. Kind of, I'll just give you an example. The TID is another entity that has two tribes. So it has Robinson and Middletown representing the other tribes as well. Of course, this is something that they all have to buy into. But I know as well as Moke does, we don't want to speak for other governments, of course. But I guess that would probably be ideal to see who would want to. And let's see if there might be another government that says, I want to be a part of it. So you know, that's the other thing. So...
Or would you be able to have this conversation and figure out what that might look like? And when we come back with the applications for the public at large, we can come back for a decision of how the implementation of tribal government would be in this conversation?
Right. I think that probably be the best ideal way to do this is to meet with the different governments and figure out how they want to approach it.
Okay, so do we want to approve today with the nine with the anticipation to come back with a plan on how to implement tribal government into this committee? And that would work out?
Right, yes.
Okay.
I think so.
And Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, I think, given the nature of this committee, I think it's the tribal nations who should figure out how they want to be represented and not us telling them. And if the committee gets too large, would it be possible to reduce the number of the public seats from four to three or two? Or how would that work? Or less than that? I don't know. But that's a possibility of making the committee a little more workable and then having a working group or a non-voting membership of the board that makes up the public seats. I'm not sure how that would work, but that's just another option.
Thank you for that. Ms. Hutchinson, I see that you turned on your video. Do you have a comment on this item?
I do, but before I give it, I wanted to call to your attention that there's a hand up in the room, so you might want to take that first.
Okay. When I open up public comment, we'll go ahead and take that, but go ahead.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought you already had opened up.
One of the things that I'll do too is I'll, I'm meeting, like I said, I think in my calendar, I'm meeting with the Robinson leadership. And I'll ask them if they feel comfortable, since I'm already on the committee, you know, like representing a lot of the POMO people on the North Shore, if they're comfortable, you know, with me in essence being, you know, their representative. And, you know, I know I represent the county. It's kind of one of those things, but I'm a Native American. I am a POMO from the North Shore. But I don't know what that looks like. I'm just asking. You know, that way we can consider the positions and whatnot. I'm putting that out there.
So here, in my view, 11 is a workable number. You could approve that today as you suggested with two tribal seats, two city seats, and then the original composition that was proposed. And see if that works and come back and change it later as opposed to not adding any potential tribal seats today. You know, you'll be further along, I think, if you go with that. And if it's not acceptable, you could make a change. And the intention with these meetings is that they will be open to the public. So anyone that wants to have a voice there can have it. I envision that I would be supporting the board members in these meetings. And I imagine a lot of other people plan to participate. So it is a very open meeting.
I feel, I appreciate what Supervisor Pyska said in the sense that we're telling a government group what their representation should look like when right now, 100% of the county, actually, almost 200% of the county is being represented by two folks. 100% of our cities are being represented. And then it's like 30 to 20% of tribal nations would be represented. And I don't know that that's the appropriate way to move forward. But because we've changed what the scenario might look like of the committee, I will, potentially might look like of the committee, I will reopen public comment. And I see that Joanne Cicado has her hand raised. And if we can unmute her, please, Jake.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks, you guys. Thanks for this conversation today. A couple of questions. One, when you include the two cities, do you want to include law enforcement representatives from each of those cities? Which I know would create two more positions on it. So there's that question. And then we also have other populations that don't feel like they're represented, maybe like the Latinx and the Black communities, to ensure that, you know, for being inclusive, to make sure that those voices are at the table. So just throwing those out there.
Thank you for your consideration. And again, we opened up public comment. Is there any other further public comment? Jake, if we can make sure to open up the Zoom room?
All right. I sent a unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. I would hope that our public representation is going to be a cross-section of our communities and not just representative of one or two specific groups. So I would suspect that's the reason for the four public members to do our best to go through the applications and figure out what a good representation would look like on that committee group. Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, that's what I was going to mention. The community member seats should reflect other populations in our community. But does it make sense to have a facilitator of this board who's not a member to kind of direct the conversation? Is this going to be a staff member or is this going to be a volunteer position? Because this is starting to be a large committee and it feels like there should be someone keeping everybody on track, keeping charge of the agendas and minutes and facilitating the meetings.
I was going to leave that up to Supervisor Crandall and Supervisor Scott to figure out how they were going to navigate through that process. I appreciate them saying yes to wanting to be on the committee just for that reason. So at this point, what does this board feel most comfortable with moving forward? I'd like to move forward with something at least to get the process started rather than not. But please provide some input or provide an action.
Well, I personally would hate to move forward and not have at least two seats for our native community. I just think that would look bad. It might come off that we didn't put any seats for them, knowing that we are looking at how we are going to incorporate them into this committee. So I would like to at least have the two seats available. I know it was asked about law enforcement in the city. I didn't envision that. I would think that whoever they sent from the city would represent that and go back to their prospective boards, which I know the police chiefs do go to the city council meetings. But again, everybody will be welcome to come to this meeting. It's going to be interesting to see how many people we have actually show up and are excited about this. And I do believe we will have a large group. So I would like to move forward with the 11 seats. In the meantime, I will work with Supervisor Crandall and see if we can't reach out to all our tribal nations and see how they would like to be represented on this board. Again, as Supervisor Pyska put up, not telling them how they need to be or act or, but asking them how they would like to be a part of this.
Was that a motion?
Sure.
Paul's second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Johanna, if we can please get a roll call.
Mr. Chair, could you state the motion for Johanna, please?
So she's, what was offered was 11-member committee with Supervisor Crandall and Supervisor Scott representing the county, an open slot for law enforcement from the county, mainly for the fact that that is an elected position and not covered by the board as it is by the cities. And then two positions for, one per city, and then two positions for tribal nations with four that are public. So that makes a total of 11. And we will open up applications for the committee and then come back once those applications have been received. So we can go ahead and appoint those individuals to the committee and then receive more information from the upcoming conversations with tribal nations if we need to do any kind of changing or tweaking for proper representation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Johanna, I'm taking notes too. So are we good?
If Supervisor Scott says yes, then we're good.
We're good. That sounds good to me.
Okay.
But does Johanna have all that?
Okay, thank you so much for that. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Subatia?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Johanna, and thank you for this conversation as well. Looking forward to what that looks like. And it is 10:45. Let's go ahead. And let's move on to our 10 a.m. item.
Can we take a break? I think the next item is going to be long.
Okay, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break. Is that good enough for everybody? Okay, we'll come back at 10:50 a.m. Okay, let's go ahead and restart at 10:52 a.m. This is our 10 a.m. item. Consideration of early activation changes. A, amendment to cannabis cultivation ordinance. B, resolution for those, oops, I apologize for that, resolution for those who were early activated in 2020. And C, efficiency processes direction to staff. It has been brought to my attention that there needs to be some further review of this coming from our county council. I did work with county council and with the administration of the Department of Community Development. However, I will admit that I was very pushy in getting this onto the board due to the timeline that we have between when people need to start planting and things of the like. I'm going to offer an idea of what we can do today. Ms. Grant, I'd love to hear from you in order to ensure that we are doing this the appropriate way. I think this is an important conversation. I'm sure many of you have had a lot of phone calls on how it is that we are going to move forward in this season. I think that what is in front of us is a doable and proper approach. But what I would like to do is not just table this and work with county council on the side to ensure that we cover everything. But I'd love to discuss it at the very least, get public input, then go back and discuss it some more internally and bring it back as soon as possible to either the next agenda or two weeks from now maximum. And so if everybody is in agreeance with that, I'd love to again, hear from Ms. Grant to see what she has to say.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think that that would be a good idea. I think you'll find that public comment will be quite valuable. I will tell you that, you know, for some of the reasons that we've discussed and also just with the content of the existing ordinance, I would recommend that there be a two-week timeframe between what you hear today and the next ordinance, just to avoid anything moving too quickly and to be able to consider all of the commentary that you'll receive today.
Right. Okay. And I do understand the, again, the timelines of those dealing with or involved in the cultivation of cannabis business. I want to be mindful of that timeline. And also, throughout this whole process, I also want to be mindful of our staff and their capacity and their timelines as well. But I do want to make sure that we do this correctly and appropriately and not something that's going to have consequences that were not thought of. And so I will go ahead and continue with my presentation. And just remember that we're only doing a discussion on this today and not taking action to make any changes at this moment in time. And so Jake, if you could please share your screen with the presentation that I sent over to you. I just wanted to quickly go over some of the changes. This is all related to our Chapter 21 Cannabis Cultivation Ordinance of our code. This is specifically about early activation, which is Section 27.4, which states that our planning division may allow early activation of use permits under specific certain conditions, such as no construction, no grading, or removal of trees. Adequate measures are being taken on dust control, erosion, traffic control, parking, drainage, and waste disposal. Those early activation use permits only last six months. After that, they expire. The idea is that ultimately, the goal is to get a use permit and not continue having an early activation. And also that early activations can be denied if planning division deems... Uh, and also that early activations can be denied if Planning Division deems project has as having adverse environmental impacts. Uh, so this is not an automatic, here's an early activation because you submitted some paperwork. Uh, there needs to be some review of the project prior to making that kind of determination in order to obtain a uh, use, uh, early activation use permit. And if we can go to the next page, please. So that's as it is currently and how early activation works. Uh, on our ordinance, uh, originally on a section twenty-seven point thirteen of the Cannabis Cultivation Ordinance, it states that early activation is allowed under these conditions. You must submit a complete application, you must have evidence of water board, and you must pass your background checks and other general requirements, as well as the requirements that I just read earlier of what early activation allows you uh, is allowed to do. And so if we can go to the next page. So here are some of the changes for clarification and guidance. Um, part of our reason that this is uh, an issue for us, that we need to make sure to provide the proper guidance uh, and clarification, both for staff and for our uh, applicants, is that our timeline for getting use permits, as we all know, i- is long. Uh, there's a lot of things at play right now to try and reduce those timelines. But this is why early activations has played such a large role in cannabis cultivation, because those timelines are long. Uh, some people have received early activations two years, uh, and still do not have a use permit. Uh, but we have to make sure that everybody's aware of what the process is, the appropriate process. Um, and so some of the changes that I would like to add into the section of cannabis cultivation under early activation is that an initial study must be submitted, deemed complete by the department, and completed the State Clearing House Public Review Process prior to requesting an early activation permit. Um, I'm gonna read you what was submitted to the public as of um, uh, the agenda being processed. I have had a lot of further conversation and feedback throughout the weekend and yesterday and will provide some of that feedback as well as to potential changes that could occur to what was originally written, but I'm reading what was originally written. Uh, also, in addition to that, a notification of project to all neighboring parcels within seven hundred feet of project. Uh, this is an early activation of a use permit, a major use permit typically is what these are. A use permit through the CEQA process re- requires notification to the public that these things are occurring. Uh, there are potential nuisances that can occur from the ca- uh, cultivation of cannabis. Uh, and so we wanna make sure that we are, um, that everybody's aware that this is what needs to happen in order to go through and get an early activation permit. Subsection says if uh, that there's no approval of the early activation if formal complaints are received. Uh, this is somewhat similar to a minor use permit. There is a rule uh, that we can go ahead and do a ministerial sign-off of a minor use permit if during the notification process, no complaints are received. If complaints are received, we can go ahead and push those uh, to the Planning uh, Commission for the actual public hearing. Uh, most of the time, it appears that we are bringing our minor use permits to the Planning Commission, but that is a potential um, avenue that we could take with minor use permit. This is kind of saying the same thing. Uh, also, an agency review request time period. Uh, if agency comment requires mitigations, not allowable, for instance, grading or, or changing, uh, moving enough dirt or, or cutting down trees, not allowable under an early activation permit, then no approval of early activation, or else now you don't, you fit within the criteria of early activation. Um, I know that it is important to me, I don't know, um, I can't speak for the rest of the board, uh, that our agencies such as our fire districts are very aware of what is happening, what projects are being developed. Uh, so I wanted to make sure that this was written down and so people were aware uh, that this is a part of the early activation process. If we can uh, go ahead and go to the next page, please. Uh, also seeking to add these changes for clarification and guidance, the applicant may not change early activation once permit has been approved. Now, this would be a new rule, basically, uh, in talking with both Director De Leon and Deputy Director Thomas. Uh, this is an ongoing issue where people submit an early activation, then they come back and they say, actually, I wanna double the size, actually, I wanna reduce the size. That takes a lot of time away from staff to be able to focus on use permits. And I want to get away from that. Early, early activation permits are very discretionary. And so I think that rather than putting so much focus on early activation, let's get to the use permit. Provide us an early activation permit if you have the capability to do so. Uh, but don't change it. What it is that you ask us for is what it is that you get to do. Um, and then if, and this is a big if, because I hope that we can find a way to make sure that people are only early activated once and then get a use permit. We'll work on, we're working on those changes and that'll be a part of the later conversation as well. But if by chance we continue being delayed in getting you a use permit and you require, you are looking to get additional early activation, again, no changes allowed, it must be in good standing, and applicant has made efforts to provide complete documents to help obtain use permit. Basically, uh, we haven't asked you to do uh, uh, some changes to your um, site plan, some changes to your uh, initial studies, some cha- whatever changes we require of you. If you have not came, came back to us in a timely fashion to provide those changes, uh, we don't want you to continue having early activations. We need to move forward as a use permit. Uh, and, and on both sides, we need to do a better job of, of keeping that timeline. And again, I hope that some of the things that we're doing right now and the things we'll discuss later will help our staff with that. Uh, and then early activation may not be requested, should say requested, after April twentieth of each year. Now, of course, I chose a random date and I know I chuckled when I chose the date. But at the same time, part of the reason for that is some people were asking for early activations in June or July, and the state doesn't automatically give you a use permit. And so we don't want to uh, uh, allow people to ask us so late in the season that we say yes to cultivation and the state doesn't have the capability to provide them with the state license. Part of the reason for the issue is if you don't have a state license, you can't be in the metric system. If you're not in the metric system, which is basically a process of keeping track of uh, plants from seed to sale, uh, then you cannot legitimately sell your product through a dispensary or through legal means. And so it is absolutely important that somebody receives both the early activation and the state, not just the early activation, and not be able to obtain the state licensing in time. And so that is why I'm offering an earlier time of the year. Now, I, I did have a conversation uh, with the direct, uh, Deputy Director Thomas about the fact that if um, if the Planning Division is done with the application, knows what potential uh, impacts to the environments are, let's say it's categorical, it's categorically exempt or, or uh, no mitigations are required, uh, but we can't get somebody to the Planning Commission because of how busy we are with applications, that they can offer an early activation post April twentieth, but the applicant may not request bef- uh, after April twentieth. Uh, if we can go to the next. Okay, let's go to the next page. I'll get back to this one and I'm sorry, I apologize for that. So I wanna make sure and talk about both the resolution and the amendment, and they're very similar, and I'm going to explain why they're, they're, they're both being offered. The amendment is for anybody that's going through the process currently and has not been offered the opportunity to grow at this moment in time. No early activation and obviously no use permit. Or else they wouldn't be here for that. But for those who received an early activation last year, in my opinion, you're in a, a limbo situation uh, where you've invested so much of your capital to be able to actually move forward with the entire process, paying for soil, paying for workers, and so on. To ask a business to start, stop, and then continue, I don't think is the right pathway to go. We need to uh, offer a little bit of a middle ground to be able to get these folks uh, moving forward. And so here is a resolution for those specific individuals who were act, early activated last year. Um, and here are some of the criterias. Um, if you have not received a use permit for your twenty-twenty-one season, early activation for twenty-twenty-one may be requested if you've paid all your taxes, applicable taxes, uh, no violation of state or local laws. It says on there, obtain state licenses, I'll get back to that. No formal complaints that were substantiated from neighboring parcels within seven hundred feet. We can go ahead and move to the next slide, please. Um, then the early activation may be issued if an initial study has been submitted and received. Early activation permit covers same footprint slash acreage as previous permit. An early activation permit will require use of smart pots or something similar to cultivate in twenty-twenty-one. The reason I put that in there is, again, we wanna make sure that we quickly help folks get to the point of being able to grow if they already did last year. If they have a use permit coming up, great. If they don't, let's get them that early activation and the safest, least impactful way to do it is by allowing them to use smart pots or something similar, so that there's minimal ground disturbance occurring uh, on their farm. Uh, then, once approved, no changes are allowed in the EA permit, just as discussed earlier in the amendment. Let's stop wasting staff time by making changes. Let's go ahead and move forward. If we can go to the next slide. Okay, and so um, that, right, at this point, those are the amendments being offered and the or, uh, of the ordinance and the resolution being offered for people who grew under an EA last year. If we can go back three slides, I wanna offer some suggestions that I've received um, as far as what we uh, can change. So potential additional changes to original offering based on feedback. This is for the ordinance amendment. Uh, there's no need to wait until the clearing house is done with review to provide an early activation. Uh, the clearing house is basically the last step before a use permit. And we should be able to see what the conclusion of their initial study is, uh, whether it's gonna be categorically exempt or whether there's gonna be a need for mitigation. Our staff should be able to um, to wade through the document and figure out whether an early activation can be allowed based on the criteria of early activation or not. So that is one uh, potential change. Uh, formal complaints halting early activation should be solely from neighboring parcels or agency review comments. Uh, rather than allowing any public comment to stop early activation, uh, let's go ahead and make it part of the neighboring area only uh, for the early activation part. Um, add additional text regarding early activation activated. Uh, when early activation is activated and completed, uh, once state licensing has been obtained. Basically, um, we should provide you with both at the same time. We've had some issues with that where some people failed to move forward with their state. We had to go and abate because of the fact that they were growing illegally without a state license. Let's not waste our time. Let's only provide you the early activation when the state has approved it. Uh, we go through what's called a local authorization process with C D F A. They contact us. Is this applicant ready to go on your end? If we say yes, they process their state license. Once they have their state license, we give them the early activation. That way, we know that they're good on our end and they're good on the state's end. And I, while that was a policy that was discussed and uh, implemented at the end of last year in twenty twenty or towards the latter end of last year, uh, it needs to be in writing to ensure that applicants are aware that this is the process we are following, uh, rather than seeming like it's just an arbitrary process. And I think it's a good process, it's a good, safe process to have. So those are the potential changes on the amendment. If we can go to the uh, last page, please. Second to last page. There you go. Uh, and this is for the resolution, uh, potential additional changes to original offering based on feedback. Uh, has obtained state licenses when appropriate. Some people who were good uh, good uh, collaborators and good partners with the county, did receive an early activation, but did not obtain the state license at time. So to say that they had to have a state license in order to renew their EA this year uh, seems inappropriate and we wanna make sure that it says, has obtained the state licenses when appropriate. So uh, just wanna make sure that that's there and it doesn't block off folks who uh, uh, did the right thing and did not continue to cultivate uh, without a state license. So I wanted to talk about both because it's hard not to talk about one without the other. Um, and at this moment, I will prohibit from moving on to item C, as I think that that is more of a separate conversation, but wanted to open up to the board uh, for any comments. In fact, uh, before I open up to the board, I, I know that we do have Director De Leon and Deputy Director Thomas with us. If they have any comments prior to opening it up for the board for comments, questions, and suggestions. And if we can go ahead and close um, the presentation, that would be great, Jake. Thank you so much. Good morning.
There we, there we go. I got unmuted. Thank you. Um, thank you uh, very much, Chairman Sabatier. I don't personally have uh, very many comments uh, after your presentation. Uh, Takara Thomas has done the heavy lifting on this uh, for C D D. And um, I, I'm kinda taking notes and, and um, uh, will be uh, be working with her, but I, I'm gonna actually kinda defer to Takara again, because she's done the, the lion's share of the work on this project.
Thank you, Director De Leon. Thank you, Chair Sabatier, for putting together the presentation. Um, the only thing I would add to it is that the early activation permit is a use permit in and of itself. This is why we have to be mindful of the CEQA guidelines. Um, and that's the only addition, point of clarification that would make at this time.
Right, and I do appreciate Deputy Director Thomas's time. I know that her and I have had many phone calls uh, and conversations about this. Uh, appreciate her hard work and her staff having to go through the processes of getting people use permits. Um, there, there, there is nobody that is in that department that is not overwhelmed with the number of applications that we have. I would like to see it as a um, uh, burden of success uh, rather than anything else, and we just need to figure out how to provide the right resources to uh, help them out with their uh, timelines and their capacity. So appreciate uh, your time and your uh, expertise on this. Let's go ahead and open it up to the board uh, for any comments, questions, or suggestions. Supervisor Pyska.
Thanks, um, Bruno, for putting this together. I know it's um, it's been a lot of work. Uh, it's important, though, to get um, these permits getting through, um, taking care of the investors that have put so much capital into these projects. Um, I, I, I think it's um, it's important that we um, that we, we, we really stick to requiring um, no amendments and changes to the permits. I think that seems to be causing a whole lot of delays, so if we can um, get that part hammered out, I think we'll be um, be a lot more efficient. Um, I agree that we really need to make sure that we have that state license in place before um, people are allowed to grow. So getting that dialed in uh, a little tighter would be great. Um, so one of the questions that I have is uh, about smart pots. And I believe that we had people in EA last year growing in native soil. And um, are they gonna be forced to grow, go into smart pots this year if they're in EA again? And also, if we have people that are submitting a permit on ag land where it's already been farmed for years, are we gonna require them to be in smart pots and bring in soil? Um, just a little clarity on what you're thinking with that. And um, the seven hundred feet, is that from the parcel boundary or is that from the project boundary? I know we have some people growing on giant parcels where their, their grow will be in the middle and it won't really affect anybody for maybe a half a mile or so. Um, so a little more clarity on that. And I have gotten a lot of comments about um, complaints, how the complaints will be handled. Will that completely stall the project in EA? Or will, will, will there be a process to look at the complaints um, so they don't lose a whole season? Just wanted some clarity on that. I think those are all my questions. Thanks.
And I think Deputy Director Thomas would have the best um, ability to respond to those questions, but I believe that the code for the seven hundred feet comes directly from the notification uh, code in our um, uh, zoning ordinance. Took me a little while to find that. Uh, and I believe it's from the property for the fact that some people are gonna be driving in and driving out, so it's not just a certain portion of the property that's gonna be impacted. Uh, there, there's some other uh, things to think about when we're thinking about the environment, such as traffic and dust control and things like that. So uh, again, I'll let Director, Deputy Director Thomas respond to that.
Thank you, Chair. Um, before I respond, I wanna just kinda um, back us up a little bit. So EA permits are permits in and of themselves and under CEQA they are projects and they're discretionary, so they have to undergo the CEQA review process. Uh, these amendments are These amendments are an opportunity for us to formalize this language to make it more consistent with that. And so with the, and I'll just take them one by one. So with the 700 feet notification, we're trying to still make sure we're responsive of SEQA because in and of itself, it's a public participation process. And we want to make sure we give everybody as much of an opportunity to formally comment and be part of that process. As far as the complaints handled, I think that is something that we'll probably have to try to manage through. I don't think we have, like, outside of our existing complaint process, which, as you all know, code enforcement is kind of overwhelmed right now. But I think it would just have to be something that we'll try to manage through. I don't think we have, like, a specific process for this specific EA amendment today. I apologize, I don't have a more firmer response to that. And as far as the smart pot, that was an opportunity that we were trying to include to help facilitate EA permits for this season. Again, I kind of sound like a broken record, but we still have to go through the SEQA process. And this was an opportunity for us to try to help figure out ways that we can get through, not get through it, but to make it a little bit more streamlined.
And I know from our conversations, it was a way to ensure the minimum impact to the environment while we were still waiting through their documents and going through the process for their early activation or their use permit as well. Anything further, Supervisor Pyska?
So if they grew last year under EA in the soil, would they be allowed to grow this year in the soil?
It would depend if they've had an environmental review completed. Because once you start making any changes to the environment, that could be considered an impact. So the idea is we want to try to complete the environmental review before they start growing to be consistent with the SEQA process.
Any other comments from supervisors or questions? Okay, hearing none. I see that we have a large participation from the public. I have a feeling it's for this item. Let's go ahead and Jake, open up the Zoom room.
All right. I've sent a mute request after the Zoom room. Comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Brenna Sullivan, Lake County Farm Bureau.
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Hi, thank you. I'm looking, real quick, I'm looking for some clarification from perhaps Ms. Thomas or Director Daley on. Are the early activation permits in ag areas currently requiring greenhouse cultivation? Or are they still allowing outdoor cultivation? This has been a problematic loophole in the early activation process.
Somehow, we can't hear you.
Would you, Chair, would you like for me to respond to the comments as we go along or after all of them have been completed?
I think let's answer them as they come. That way, it's easier to clarify what the response is to.
As Ms. Sullivan has commented, that has been a loophole. Under the early activation permit, there's no construction or grading allowed. And as she pointed out, under the farmland of local importance, you're not allowed to, under certain circumstances, cultivate outdoors. So they are being encouraged to cultivate indoors. I think that would have to be one of those instances on a case-by-case basis that we'll have to review. Because underneath the way early activation permits are outlined, you cannot do any construction, grading, or removal or any mature trees. And if you're going to construct a greenhouse, I would presume that you would have to do one of those activities. So we have not been allowing people to construct outdoors via EA if they're on one of those farmland of local importance designations. Immediately, there have been some that have slipped through the cracks. But we have been looking at them a little bit more carefully. Are we farmlands of local importance?
Not yet, not yet.
So I think that's one of those ones where underneath the outlines of the EA permit, you're not allowed to construct outdoors if you're doing, I'm sorry, you're not allowed to construct the greenhouse because it's construction.
Right. And I would suggest that the farmland protection zone that we created back on December 15th stalls the ability for that loophole to continue because now it is designated specific areas as to where you absolutely cannot do outdoor cultivation, where before there needed to be some sort of investigation of whether it was isolated or whether it was part of a larger network. And I think that we've helped to narrow that down with those farmland protection zones. Okay. Jake, let's go ahead and go with Autumn Carcy as I see a hand up.
Hello, my name's Autumn Carcy and I'm the founder and CEO of a company called Cultivo Inc. as well as Artemis Farms, Wildcat Farms, Highland Farms, and Alchemy 29. Combined, we have applied for 22 acres of cultivation and a 67,000 square foot processing facility within Lake County. We are a team of diverse professionals comprised of multi-generational cultivators, analytical chemists, agronomists, PhDs, spanning many decades of experience in cultivation, science, chemistry, manufacturing, and distribution. My company Cultivo Inc. is a design and consulting firm that I built myself from the ground up and has been responsible for building multiple large-scale outdoor farms, greenhouses, manufacturing, and processing facilities. We've built facilities in over 15 states and three countries. We have functioned with some of the most rigorous frameworks set forth by local and state government as well as federal governments. From ISO standards to sustainable farming practices, we've implemented it all. Before choosing a location to build our farm, we researched all of California and settled on Lake County. Aside from the climate and a wonderful place to call home, I would say that hands down, our decision to come to this county above all was ultimately based on one differentiating factor: early activation. We did our homework and we were assured by consultants, building and safety, and others that we would be able to cultivate for the outdoor season of 2021. We have deployed an excess of $12 million in real estate assets. We have onboarded staff, relocated vital members of our team and their families. We have purchased over $1 million in soil to comply with the current grading guidelines for early activation, allowing for above-ground planting only. And we have begun to structure community outreach programs to give back to the community that supports our businesses. Our farms' capacity combined, our processing facilities, have the ability to create over 75 new jobs within the county, many of which are full-time. We are prepared to pay nearly $1 million in taxes on year one. We are fully funded, organized, and backed by some of the top industry leaders. I'm here today to offer my assistance, the assistance of my team in any way possible to help move things forward for the greater good of this program. We must protect early activation, not only for pre-existing applicants, but any business that is organized, willing to play by the rules, and has spent an excessive amount of capital under the very pretense that was outlined, passed, and supported by the County of Lake previously. By significantly delaying the EA process and requiring SEQA full study, including completion of the filing period with the state clearinghouse, the majority of EA applications in this process at this point would be eliminated, removing the ability for significant tax revenue for the county to be realized in 2021. This is also unfair discrimination specifically against one industry unless there are restrictions applied to all types of other use permit applications. Creating an imaginary line in the sand after such capital has been deployed doesn't just cripple businesses, it's bad business. I know if we all work together, we can do better to implement the program that was originally intended. None of the issues we face here today are insurmountable. And I want to see Lake County become a thriving example for the rest of California. And rest assure myself and everyone on our team is here to give 110% to make sure we do our part. And I thank you in advance for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's go to the next public comment, Jake. I see Sean Connell has had his hand up.
Good morning, Board. My name is Sean Connell. I want to first start by saying thank you. Thank you for your hard work, your dedication, and the events that have brought us here. I do want to address a few things that were proposed. And I'm glad to hear that this will be going back for reconsideration and be presented again in the next couple of weeks. I think one of the things everybody here should be aware of is how many of these current permit applicants will be affected by these new provisions. You know, early activation is kind of the leading way for most other counties. You know, they've really provided a pathway for existing cultivators to stay current so that they can continue to gain the financial needs they need in order to be compliant with these regulations. You know, I've heard a lot of cultivators are changing their projects. And that's causing unaccounted-for staff time. Yet, at the same time, this board is now on month number three of the new year. And this is yet again, another change to cannabis processes. So while as an applicant, my changes slow down staff time, this board and governments and states changes consistently to this program also slows down staff time. It also slows down applicant time in order to be compliant with new regulations that are changing at a almost daily rate. Additionally, I'd like to talk about the April 20th date. As it is standard throughout most of Lake County cultivators, they plant as late as June. Lake County has the benefit of having an extended sun period, clean air, clean water. And that allows them to have an extended cultivation period. Some clients that I represent have harvested all the way out until November, some even into December. So I think that the arbitrary date of April 20th might be looked at to be moved to be more accordance with the standard planting guidelines here in the county. And I believe that would be June 15th. Other than that, I think that's all I really have. I wrote a very lengthy response and deposited that in the e-comment period as well. I want to say thank you for your time. I look forward to continually hearing from this board. I think that we all understand that this is a vital industry that provides a very large tax base to not just this county, but much of the rural counties in California, where we've heard all morning of our obstacles as a smaller county dealing when our jurisdictions overload our population. I feel like this is a way for this county to not only have a stable, sustainable tax base, but to also continue to encourage a compliant, legal cannabis cultivation in Lake County. Thank you for your time, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Jake, let's move on. I see James Comstock with the next hand that I saw.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is James Comstock. I'll be speaking for our family today. My father, Jim Comstock, is on the line. But with our limited internet connectivity at the family ranch, I'll be sharing most of our thoughts. Our family are longtime residents of Lake County. We have a family ranch in rural Southern Lake County where we've been involved in agriculture since around 1928. We really love our community. We love our rural lifestyle. We have currently a proposed cannabis project on our ranch with tenant partners. And our proposed project was carefully considered by our family. We carefully selected our partners with environmental and community impact in mind. Our hope is that we can be part of an agricultural-based activity that preserves our community character while bringing a positive economic impact in terms of jobs and opportunities for local businesses. So in that vein, the plan for our project includes careful work ahead of time with cultural and environmental stakeholders to help this project be an asset to our community. We are in support of the board's efforts to carefully manage early activation in the county. And we just have some comments on two portions of what is being proposed today. In section C subsection E I, talking about early activation permits shall not be approved if formal complaints are received about the project. I'm going to echo the questions that Supervisor Pyska had shared. I'm, we're concerned about misuse of this section, particularly on a large piece of property. Competitors or people with illegal cultivation could ostensibly stall a legal project by submitting formal complaints without review for reasonableness. Those people who are submitting those complaints could be so far away from the actual impacted area that any impact would be moved. But there doesn't appear to be a process to deal with that. So in the event that that is included and that remains, we'd ask the board to consider altering that to take that into consideration to mitigate problems of misuse or unreasonable complaints to stall projects. Also, in the proposed resolution, section 1 subsection F I, the new early activation will only be approved if the applicant uses smart pots or something similar. We understand the intent of that. And certainly, early activation is somewhat of a privilege. And it is by its very name, early, it is fast. Environmental impact on the soils is something that is important and needs to be considered. At the same time, historically farmed lands have a different situation. And we would greatly prefer to not bring in outside soil or along with other outside materials being the pots themselves to grow in a place where the ground has been disturbed for years for agricultural activity. So while I understand the purpose and appreciate the intent of that, I'd ask the board to consider. I'm sorry?
No, sorry. My mistake, we unmuted somebody accidentally, keep going.
Okay, I'm almost done. We'd ask the board to consider putting some clause for evaluation in there for exceptions for a ground that has been historically used as agriculture where the disturbance in the soil would not be particularly new. There is a, part of the draw to the plan that we have is a look and feel that is more like traditional agriculture, which is very different from the smart pots. We would prefer to do that from the beginning rather than starting with something else and then pivoting back to in-ground cultivation later on. So thank you for your time and thank you for your efforts.
Thank you very much. And if your father is Jim Comstock I'm thinking of, please make sure and say hi to him. He used to be a supervisor on this board, so he knows what we're dealing with.
He is, he's on the line. And again, we hope for faster internet out at the ranch someday soon.
All right, and I apologize, I muted C A O Hutchinson, who was letting me know that the three minutes were up. I did not hear that, and I will try to keep track of that time as well. Jake, let's go ahead and open up Damian Ramirez. He's had his hand up for a while, too.
Hello, Damian Ramirez here. I currently hold a use permit with the county and a couple early activations for last year. First off, thank you very much, Chairman Sabatier and Deputy Director Thomas. Appreciate all your work on this and everyone else who's involved. I wrote some written comments, but it didn't cover everything. So I wanted to just chime in on a couple other items, one of which Mr. Comstock and Supervisor Pyska both mentioned. I believe it's imperative to add in substantiated into the amendment as it is already written in the resolution in regards to these complaints. It's also important to clarify what substantiated means, you know, on record. We don't want to run into the issue of differing interpretations from the different stakeholders, whether it's C D D, code enforcement, you know, obviously, the applicants or neighbors. I think having something clear that everyone knows is important. We ran into interpretation issues a lot over the last couple of years in regards to the cannabis cultivation. I think everyone would appreciate the fine term to allow most consistent application of this rule. Just wanted to touch briefly on my desire to begin some sort of a process for C D F A. Chairman Sabatier alluded to it earlier. You know, being able to concurrently run these permits and the state licensing is really important. I know the county ran into some issues last year with people not obtaining all their proper entitlements. Could be many reasons for that. This is one of them potentially. Is existing structure how it is? You've got county authorizations. They inhibit the C D F A licensing from further processing since it stops at the beginning stage when local jurisdiction is required to move on to the, for the C D F A to look over all the other requirements. If a cultivator has all required items and is simply waiting for the local approval, they should be some, they should be provided some sort of document from the county, which, you know, they can turn into the C D F A to allow for all their other requirements to be reviewed while the county permit, the EA or the U P finishes its processing. I think that will help the industry a lot. Think it will prevent issues as we ran into last year. There is some sort of solutions that have been talked about from Chairman Sabatier to address this. But I think it's really important. And then lastly, let me just end with, there's the bill SB 59. I think it's really important for the board to write a letter on behalf of the county. Seems like the bill should pass, but it's still important, the local support from our B O S to, you know, to do our part in protecting the local industry. We've all worked so hard.
to, you know, to do our part in protecting the local industry. We've all worked so hard to get this going, so.
And Damian, you, you've reached your three minutes, so we'll go ahead and stop you. Thank you very much for your comments, and I will allude a little bit further to S B fifty-nine later in this presentation. Let's go ahead and go with, I think Crystal Keesy was next. Jake, please.
Good morning, Supervisors. I want to first thank you for the opportunity to speak on this, and I agree with Supervisor Sabatier. This is like a good problem that we have that the Community Development Department is inundated with applications for legal licensed cannabis. That means that what we voted for in two thousand sixteen is actually working, so we should all be very proud of the fact that Lake County is facilitating a transition from the black market to the white market in cannabis. My issue is that these permit applications, it's all about timing. I'm going to use my project as an example. I submitted our use permit for two acres of cultivation in March two thousand nineteen. It was deemed complete in October of two thousand nineteen. I received my first early activation in November of two thousand nineteen, and then again in April of two thousand twenty for the twenty twenty growing season. Then my sequel was completed early twenty twenty. And then and then I, and then in December, but I wasn't given a use permit hearing until January of two thousand twenty-one. And in December, the new farmland protection ordinance was passed. And then the week later, and then an intention, a resolution of intention to amend it was passed. And so my project is affected by that. And so on December fifteen, on December fifteenth, there was a resolution of intention, not an ordinance, so it hasn't been the, the original December eighth ordinance was not amended yet. And so my planning commission hearing in January that I'd been waiting two years for was tabled with no date certain. And last week, the planning commission tabled the discussion about the farmland protection ordinance. So now the very earliest in a perfect timeline that my two acre project could be approved is May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, after it was submitted in March of two thousand nineteen. And so my question is, in order for me to have a season, do I have to apply for an early activation and wait for my use permit approval? And if that's the case, my early activation was ten thousand square feet last year. My use permit is for two acres. If it's approved in May, June, or July, am I on the hook for the taxes for the season if I'm early activated for ten thousand square feet? Or am I on the hook for the use permit that's approved in May for the hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in taxes that I'm supposed to, to pay for my fully entitled project? The project passed the sequo analysis in early twenty twenty. The fact that I've had to wait this long for a completely compliant use permit application project is the most frustrating part to me because I've done everything that I can. Three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Let's go ahead and finish it up, Crystal.
Oh, well, I just, I just would like to, like, I'm in this sort of really gray area between just about to have a, ostensibly a use permit approval. But in order to have a decent season, I won't have that permission till May at the earliest. So do I have to apply for early activation in addition to the use permit applicant, the use permit?
And, and I, I will respond to that by saying that I don't think that at this point in time as a public meeting with the board that we make those types of decisions. I think that decision would be with the planning department. The timeline is the reason why we're having this discussion because we need to slim down those timelines, and I understand that there's still a lot of gray area for a lot of people, including many of those who have their hands raised right now, waiting to make some comments. I, I don't have a specific answer for you. And again, I don't really want to put our staff on the hot seat also by providing an answer to a specific application right now. But I would say reach out to your supervisor and reach out to your planner, and hopefully we can get a better answer for you.
Yes, I guess I would just like to say that it is, it's all about timing because cannabis is, is a farming enterprise, and that's really.
And, and I agree with you on that. Thank you very much for your comments. Let's go to the next person that I saw. I believe it was, I'm going to say this wrong, but Diogen Creoso.
Hello, my name is Andrew. I have, I, I'm like.
Can you provide your full name, please?
Andrew Cone, C O N E.
Thank you.
I'm trying to start the video here.
There you are.
Hi. I'm likely to apply for a major use permit, hopefully with early activation on at least two different projects in Lake County. I wanted to talk about what I perceive as a lack of adequate resources for, for community development. As, as far as I can tell, and based on things I've, credible things, I think I've heard through the grapevine, it, it appears that C D D does not have enough people. It does not have enough people who have adequate training, and it doesn't have enough people, period, to, to review these applications in a timely and efficient fashion. I, I know a lot of other cannabis cultivators in the county have been extremely frustrated with C D D, and I understand that, but, you know, I mean, you get what you fund. And I, it, it is my understanding that, that the people who work in planning and other aspects of community development are frankly not paid enough, that perhaps there has not been adequate effort to retain staff. And I say this as somebody who, who has occasionally been frustrated with planning, but I, I know having worked a bit in government before that like it, it's not necessarily easy to, 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 you know, for an agency to meet the demands the public wants to put in it. So I would like to encourage the board to think, not just in terms of crafting the ordinance correctly, but I mean, seriously think about what do you need to do to hire more people, to pay them more, to, to give them whatever resources they need to, to do this job well, because I feel like no regulatory change will ever make up for a lack of administrative resources. And I echo, for example, Ms. Keesy's frustration about the, the timeline. That is a legitimate source of anger. But, but again, it, it just needs to be, there needs to be the people there and the, the resources to, to act. I also agree with Mr. Comstock about the possibility of frivolous complaints. Unfortunately, there is a certain fraction of the population that is heavily biased against cannabis, associates it with criminality for obvious historical reasons. And, you know, but people are entitled to their opinions, but frivolous complaints are a serious concern, and they undermine the credibility of any real legal community process. There needs to be some bar of how substantive, how legitimate a complaint is for it to have any real administrative impact. Elsewhere, what you're talking about will not flow. I also echo the need that one of the other participants, I forget as they mentioned, for some sort of document that we can submit to C D F A to get our state license in play. And lastly, with respect to.
Go ahead and finish it up.
Thank you. With respect to the proposed limitation on the ability to change early activation applications, I totally understand the desire to reduce the burden on planning. That's legitimate. The problem is if you make it so that we have to commit to paying a certain amount of taxes, then what we're kind of have to do is shoot low because we don't want to have to pay a very large amount of taxes on stuff we won't cultivate. And as such, you're creating a sort of incentive to undershoot, which actually results in us doing less investment in our projects and you getting less tax revenue. So I would encourage you to, to trim back that a little bit. We should at least be able to downsize. We have the right to downsize cultivation if we need to, so that we don't have to pay taxes on weed we're not growing. That would be better, I think.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Next, I believe was Charlene Wiggnall.
Hi, Bruno, and everybody. You did a great job on your cannabis presentation this morning. I wanted to, I really like the fact that you're going to require state licensing approved before their before you release the E A. But I want to, you're making it sound like it's a singular license, and I want to clarify that you guys make sure that you put in the ordinance, it's mutually plural, square licenses per acre, you know, whatever the canopy space is. And then I just wanted to support, the Cannabis Alliance sent you guys a letter. You guys all got it, right? Cannabis a letter that was sent out March first. And I, did you guys all get it?
I do not believe that it was attached in the email. Let me see if, I, I don't think so, so please send that again.
Okay. And regarding chapter, it, it talks about other stuff, but I truly support the alliance. It's a wonderful organization. But regarding chapter twenty-one, section twenty-seven dash thirteen, C E and I, they would like to see the wording on that be stated as applicants received no formal and substantiated complaints from neighboring parcels within seven hundred feet of the project, real, real property area. But I'll send that to you. The letter. And that's all I needed to say.
Thank you very much.
I'm proud of your amendments. I'm really happy about the amendments that I saw. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and go with Lathan's iPhone, which I believe is Lathan Martinez.
Yeah, guys, sorry if you hear my son in the background. I'm watching him today.
It's how the world works these days.
What'd you say?
It's how the world works these days.
Totally. So yeah, this is Lathan Martinez. I have an early activated property off of Highway fifty-three. And then I have on Ogulon Canyon Road, submitted early activation. I kind of wanted to go through, and Bruno and I have spoke about a lot of things on the property. So I'll go with Highway fifty-three, one thousand, Highway fifty-three first. We initially applied for a five acre early activation. We only built out about fifty-three thousand square feet. So halfway through the year last year, we submitted paperwork to dial back our early activation for the sole purpose of not having to pay taxes on the full early activated amount since we didn't plant that much canopy. So we, we got that reduced, we paid less taxes, but it kind of came back to bite me in the, I guess, whatever. It came back to bite me a little bit because now we want to expand our early activation, and we can't do it, even though we have submitted, you know, all the right paperwork and, and everything. We have all of our state licensing paid for. And a real quick comment about that, the, the county planning is sending local authorization without early activation. Now, they did it on my new expanded area. But we can't expand to that area because we can't change our early activation. Furthermore, we submitted our M U P completed application with sequo documents and everything in August of last year. We didn't get responded to until February of this year. We responded within a day to their comments. And we finally got the initial study and everything completed as they, as they wanted it. So they have circulated my M U P as of, I think, Monday. But it does take a long time. So my biggest, I guess not complaint, but, but hope is that we are able to extend our early activation for the full growing season if we aren't to our M U P, which we, we aren't going to be because my early activation is going to run out the twenty-sixth of this month. So I just wanted to be really clear, and I think everyone would kind of have the same sentiment. If we're, if we're, you know, in good standing, if we have our sequel submitted, if all of that's in, I really think there should be a clear pathway for staff to approve these early activations, basically through an administrative permit. It shouldn't take a lot of time, and it should be, I guess, with no changes. In my case, I would like to expand, but I understand that that may not be what we do. I know I have a timeline, so I'm, that's real important. The other important aspect of this is we applied in August of last year for our M U P for Ogulon Canyon East, which is a fourteen acre property, a fourteen acre canopy grow, and we don't even have a planning staff person assigned to our application. So I think if people have been talking about this prior to me getting on, on the Zoom meeting, but it's, they need, I think they need really clear ways or pathways to get through this, so it doesn't take six months just to get a planner assigned to our project. I'm not planning on actually building that out, but it would be nice to get to our M. Okay, I'll just finish real quick. It'd be nice to get to our M U P because as, as we know, people in the industry, the counties have been attacked, I would say, by outside influences which try to change the ordinance. So in, in my opinion, it would be nice to get through the M U P as quickly as we can, so there's not some change that comes up, and then we're not able to grow on that property. But, but that's it. Sorry for taking too long.
Thank you for your comments. Next, Jane, let's go ahead. Let's go ahead and open up, again, I apologize if I butcher your name, but Nora Dalbaka.
You did great. That's exactly, that's exactly how to sign. Hi, Nora Dalbaka. Good morning, Chair Sabatier and members of the board. I really appreciate the robust conversation, the amount of thought that you've, you've all put into this, as well as the, the way that the county is being open to, to cannabis as a new crop. I do compliance and metric for, for cannabis farms. And one of the things we run into with early activation, a farm that I'm working with is that the early activation isn't necessarily consistent with the state and metric requirements. So I know that there may be an ability that's not codified to add or rent a structure, but the state is going to require there to be a secure structure on the premises. A lot of these farms don't actually have buildings on the premises. So even if you have your state license and early activation and you're able to get going, you may not actually be able to create an immature plant area, which is where your plants are going to start off. And so that's one of the first things you need set up. And you also need to have a secure location to keep your metric tags. So if there's any way for the, the state to, or sorry, for the county to have some consistency with what the metrical requirements are going to be for, for the state, that would, it'd make my job a lot easier. And I'd be happy to, to be a resource if, if anyone at the county has any questions about that.
Thank you for your comments. Let's open up Lisa Bugrova.
Hi, Lisa Bugrova. Thank you, Supervisors and staff for your work on handling the influx of applications with the ever-changing regulatory environment of cannabis. The proposed changes to the E A program effectively exclude applicants who have applied in accordance with the ordinance for early activation, along with their full use permit application. The early activation process as designed is an effective way for an operation to obtain, obtain state licensure for partial project components and make ends meet to fund full project applications while going through the process. These amendments, if approved, should not be retroactively applied to pending E A projects that have submitted in accordance with the ordinance standards set by the county. Full permit applications with requests to consider E A have been submitted with preliminary sequo information provided, which allows staff to effectively make the determination that the E A areas will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. Those applications should be allowed to be considered at this time, especially for applications where the E A footprints proposed on areas of historically similar uses, such as ag use areas proposed for an outdoor cannabis cultivation, whether in-ground or in pots. By significantly delaying the E A process and requiring a full sequo study, including completion of filing with the state clearinghouse, E A applications in process at this point will be so delayed, likely removing the ability for significant tax revenue for the county to be realized in two thousand twenty-one from these pending projects. This is also unfair discrimination specifically against one industry unless these restrictions are applied to all types of use permit applications that are allowed to use the E A process. Please consider these points when looking at the validity of this proposed amendment in your review in the coming weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and unmute Tiffany Devitt.
Hi, good morning. My name is Tiffany Devitt, and I represent Kindness Farms on Manning Road. First off, thank you, Supervisors and staff for your attention to this matter. I concur with her earlier comments about the importance of regulatory stability and business continuity. Like others, we've invested enormously in the county. Both our company and our employees' livelihoods are at stake in this discussion. We operated under an E A last year after we received our state license. Last summer, we also amended our initial application to add six more acres on the same property. We've completed both the biological and archaeological assessment. And like others, we've been in a holding pattern as your overworked planning department has worked through the many applications. My question today pertains to the new farmland protection zones. And the question is, are you going to allow early activation?
I'm going, I'm going to interrupt you as that is not the topic of conversation on the agenda. We're talking specifically about changes to early activation and the reasons for early activation.
Okay, fair enough. I'll take that separately. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and open up Caleb O'Connor.
Hi, Board of Supervisors and Staff. Thank you so much for your time. My, I represent High Art LLC, O'Connor Family Farms, and Aloha Top Shelf.
We've lost you.
Caleb, I have turned your video off. Looks like you disconnected there.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on and hopefully Caleb can come back on. Let's go ahead and open up Julia Jacobson.
Hi, Supervisors and Staff. I just want to say thank you very much for all the work that you've done. I am Julia Jacobson. We are Aster Farms. We were one of the first licensed cultivators in Lake County. We have also been frustrated, but also understand why a lot of the delays have been happening on early activation, including, as was just mentioned, on properties that have already been licensed for cultivation, where you are purely applying for expansion. I know that you just mentioned when Lisa was speaking that this is not a discussion about any of the prime farmland restrictions. But I just would like to put a comment forward that I think more clarity on anything relating to early activation, even if it has to do with the farmland protection, would be greatly appreciated. You know, there isn't even a GIS map that we're able to assess if our current property falls into that. It just has, it, it makes planning and financial resources very difficult when we don't even know how to begin to plan our expansion and our future operations for the business. So just wanted to make a comment that any, any timelines, resolutions, maps that are able to be provided by the county would be very useful for all of us as we're continuing to work with these adjustments that are happening at the county level and adjust our own business operations.
Thank you for your comment. I agree that we need to do a better job of updating the public on our website when we make those changes. And I know that that is being worked on. Let's go ahead and open up Cody Price.
Thank you. I appreciate your time, Chairman Sabatier and the members of the Board of Supervisors. Couple of things. I'm doing compliance at the state level and at the county level for about 6 million square feet of cultivation canopy space in Lake County. My team and I are always trying to work with all parties involved to make sure everyone's working at the same pace at the state and the county level. And we've made some great strides with the CDFA and the CDFW recently on working hand in hand with the counties. We're really happy with everything that's been going on at the county level. We want to say thank you for that. As far as the early activation projects being changed based on guidance from regulators, that may be something to be thought about, to be approved based on setbacks or type three creeks or whatever they find. When CDFW comes out, they may allow more space or less space, which could change the project drastically. Also, our type of crops that we get involved in sometimes aren't planted until July. So that should be considered as a planting schedule. Formal complaints from neighbors who are competitors should definitely not be counted if they're in direct competition for business. We are getting licenses approved by CDFA once the county says local jurisdiction is granted. A simple form with a yes or no box checked would do the job. That, that's coming directly from the CDFA. A question about the taxes all being paid in order for early activation to be approved. There's some farms where the cannabis is tested at the state-approved testing labs and it comes back with heavy metals or pesticides or some sort of contaminant that is not remediated and the cannabis is ordered to be destroyed. Millions of dollars of cannabis has to be proven to be destroyed and turned into the state and is reported in metric as such. And I would request, when you're saying all taxes must be paid, if that crop was destroyed, that there might be some consideration for whether or not taxes should be charged on a crop that millions of dollars might have been lost on that crop. The other thing I want to talk about is the initial study process can take six to eight months or longer. Is there a way to show good faith that you've started the early activation process and you've tried to get your initial study done within the last 90 days? And if no job of your fault, it doesn't get done in time, but that doesn't negatively impact the early activation. That's all I've got today and I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see that Caleb O'Connor came back on. Let's go ahead and unmute him and give him another chance to speak.
Hello, everyone.
And maybe keep your video off so that we can try to see if that will keep you on.
Okay, thank you. Well, my name's Caleb O'Connor and I just want to extend appreciation for everyone here and what we're trying to accomplish. I'm, my perspective is from an outside investor in your community. I've been growing cannabis in California since 2017. My brothers and I and my family now have about seven different farms. And we were hoping to consolidate everything in Lake County, beautiful country, great agriculture, allowing us to use a significant portion of the land. But my concern now is we've invested $2.4 million in property there. I have other properties locked up, but now I have to enact contingencies on everything. And I can see the traumatic effect it has on the local people there that are trying to sell their land, trying to take advantage of this market. And for us as outside investors, this constantly shifting ordinances, it makes me feel very insecure. I want to be in Lake County long-term. I want to see Lake County become a significant player in the cannabis market. And I think that that's a future that we would all like to see. But with these shifting ordinances, with the, with early activation being potentially taken off the table or being made much more difficult to accomplish, it changes all the bases upon which we decided to invest in Lake County. And that's really my comment is that this is not only hurting the revenue that you'll be getting in taxes. This is hurting the local community of people that are trying to sell their properties that have them locked up with persons like myself. It's hurting us, investors that are coming into Lake County, attempting to play by the rules just to have all the rules changed on us. And that becomes a very tenuous position on which to invest. I'm familiar with following ordinances. I follow them in any county that I'm in to the letter of the law. But the difficult thing that I'm seeing here is the promise of early activation is looking like it's being taken off the table. And it's very difficult for us to invest in an environment like that because we have bills to pay. We have workers that need to be paid. The people that are selling these properties, they need to be paid. And so this is interfering with all of those timelines. And that's really my only comment.
Thank you very much. I do want to respond to that real quick, that I'm not sure who or what made a promise for early activation, but that is not within our code, that it's a promise that you shall get a early activation. It's very discretionary. And the majority of the changes being offered today are re-inforcing the actual rules that Sequa wants us to follow. There are certain parts of that that are definitely discretionary within there, like the no changing of early activation once you get a permit. But the, the rules are not necessarily made by us. They are the ones we must follow based on Sequa. And early activation is definitely one of the unique traits of Lake County. But the promise of early activation, I think, is, is a, is a mistake if that was what was told to you. And it's definitely not within our code as well. But I do appreciate your comments. Jake, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room and see if anybody who did not raise their hands might have a comment.
All right. And I sent that request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Hi, this is Erin McCarrick. I'm just wondering if you guys want me to read the LCCA letter, if that's helpful at all.
Please, I would appreciate that. As I have not been able to read it or see it, especially during the meeting, it's a little difficult to read something I have not seen yet.
Absolutely. Alrighty. So, a letter to the Lake County Board of Supervisors, dated March 1st, Agenda Item 6.4. Dear Honorable Supervisors, the Lake County Cannabis Alliance would like to express appreciation to the board and county staff for your efforts to extend the early activation program. The proposed amendments are essential for enabling continuity of cultivation for local operators and ensuring that there is a legal pathway for operators to pursue concurrent county and state applications. We support the proposed resolution and amendments, and we request the board applies the same early activation amendments to other commercial cannabis license types. We would like to suggest the two following modifications to the timelines proposed in order to account for the variability in agricultural cycles and to ensure that the greatest number of local operators can participate in the regulated market. One, application of proposed early activation amendments to the remainder of 2021 calendar year and remove the arbitrary six-month limitation, which does not allow for variation in planting cycles. Two, instead of requiring submissions by April 20th, 2021, we encourage the CDD to allow for an open-ended application period, instead focusing on compliant projects in good standing and complete applications. An arbitrary deadline will prevent qualified applicants from applying who may need more time to prepare the initial study and satisfy all environmental requirements. Instead, perhaps, applicants could file an intent to apply by April 2021 and require progress updates at specified, at specified intervals to keep county staff informed. Additionally, we would like to see the language in the proposed amendment to Chapter 21, Section 27 dot 13 CEI. Regarding complaints matches the resolution to qualify that applicants received no formal and substantiated complaints from neighboring parcels within 700 feet of project real property. We also request that applicants in good standing be allowed to alter their applications in order to accommodate such changes as increases in allowable acreage that meet all existing early activation criteria. Lastly, while Lake County is doing its best to keep the regulated actors compliant with local and state laws, we are facing an impending expiration of state license, state provisional licenses on December 31st, 2021. Absent of state level fix, all local operators holding provisional licenses will have to cease operations while waiting to move through the use permit approval process. We respectfully urge the Board of Supervisors to sign onto a letter of support of SB 59, critical state legislation that would extend the provisional deadline to January 1st, 2028, and allow for more time for local operators to obtain use permits and annual licenses. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, on behalf of Jennifer Smith, President, and on behalf of the Lake County Cannabis Alliance, farmers, producers, distributors, manufacturers, and cannabis, cannabis industry allies.
Thank you very much for reading that. And any further public comments? Item 6.4.
And I sent an additional unmute request out to the Zoom room floor.
Okay, let's go ahead and bring it back to Okay, let's go ahead and bring it back to the Board of Supervisors. Any comments, suggestions? Again, we're looking to go back to continue the conversation internally on what specific changes need to be made in order to make sure that we're offering the right avenues and pathways that are in tune with Sequa, but also in tune with what our needs are for this county.
Obviously, agree with bringing it back in a later date. Appreciate it, everybody's comments today. But, you know, I just want to reiterate, Supervisor Sabatier, I thought you did a good time. You know, we made it very clear from the beginning, we're trying to establish a new industry. There are going to be changes that come from both the state and outside agencies as we work through this. So there will be frustrations or will be growing pains as we go through this. And industry needs to understand that it is a challenge, both for the Board of Supervisors and community development as we're working through and establishing this new industry. So I just want to make that very clear. And I thought we did a good job of that as a board when we did approve this ordinance, trying to establish the legal industry. But it is an establishing industry that's going to change, probably for the next three to five years still on top of where we're at right now.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Price.
Supervisor Simon, I was going to say the same thing. This is a new industry that we're trying to establish. We have a huge amount of growth happening here, as all of you know, who are in the Zoom room today and watching other places. And ordinance, ordinances, they need to adjust as we grow. And we did this work to improve efficiencies in this process. And I think I heard a few times people discussing having to shrink their footprint for tax reasons. But I believe that you're taxed on what you grow. And so the more people that can just submit the footprint that they want to grow in, you know, that'll I'm new to the board, so I'm looking for Supervisor Sabatier to check this for me. But, you know, submit what you want to grow into and you'll pay taxes on what you actually grow. Is that correct, Supervisor?
I, I think that we've had some growing pains of our own in dealing with the taxation of cultivation versus the taxation of gross receipts. But we have to deal with what the voters voted on and what was proposed on Measure C. And I think that we are doing our best to ensure that we tax only what has actively been cultivated and nothing more. But I know that that is definitely a hardship that staff has taken on. But I think that we have done a really good job of attempting to do the right thing.
Yes. And on this item, you also had Section C where we were going to talk about support for our department. And given the discussion today, I would appreciate moving forward with that if you would like to.
If there's any further comments from any, any other board members, it might be a perfect segue to move on into Item C. Just looking for any specifics that you may have heard or any specifics that you would like to see continue being discussed between CDD, County Council, and myself as we go back to ensure that we bring the appropriate resolution and amendment to this ordinance.
Okay, then I think looking at
Hold on one second. Just want to make sure that the other supervisors, any direction for A or B before we move on?
No, I think we can move on.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Sorry, Supervisor Price. Could you go for it?
Oh, I was just gonna repeat my direction that we focus
My bad.
That we look at the complaint process and we have that spelled out. And I, I think it's worth looking at the smart pot component. If we, we had people growing in the soil last year, are we going to make them grow in pots this year? That needs to be cleared. And if people are growing on ag land, I think that needs to be explored a little bit more for clarity and get to my notes. I'm okay with the April 20th deadline. We have a fire hydrant that we're working with here of applications coming in. And I, I think it's reasonable to set a deadline for this season.
And just before we move on, my intention is to do everything that I can, that we can, to bring it to the board for approval, because I can't take these actions on my own, is to bring us to a normal state of timeline for applications. So early activation, if everything works out the way that I'm hoping it will over the course of the next year, as we discuss what we can do in Part C, that early activation should not be the leverage point that it has been for so many applicants and that we will get use permits. And I want to get people those 10-year use permits because that is a much more stable and predictable environment for any business to be in, rather than a year-to-year or six months to six months early activation permit. But again, we need to get there and it's about how we get there. So let's go ahead and move on and provide your input on Part C. Or do you want me to present Part C first, Supervisor Price? Or did you have comments right away?
I have comments, but I think it would be, it would be great for you to present and we can go from there.
Okay. Actually, I would like to bring back Deputy Director Thomas to provide at least what, what are some of the changes that we're to provide at least, what are some of the changes that we're currently taking on to help reduce those timelines? I know that there have been some RFPs, requests for proposals, from consultants to help us with the SEQA process. If you can go ahead and kind of detail what those steps have been that we've been taking already.
Yes, of course Chair Sabatia. As you pointed out, we did do a request for quotes for consultants to take on an initial an initial list. We were able to contract with one consultant, and they're currently working on 10 initial studies and mitigated negative declarations for projects with the timeline of getting them ready for the Planning Commission, March 25th and April 8th. Those are moving deadlines, but we are still moving quite forward. I'm currently working with staff to realign the workload amongst the staff more equitably. We're also working, we have one extra help staff member who is taking on chef capacity to do about three initial studies per month. And then on a limited case-by-case basis, we are accepting completed initial studies, mitigated negative declarations from outside prepared consultants. The reason we're doing that on a limited case-by-case basis is that as the lead agency, the county still is responsible for SEQA, making sure that, you know, essentially we dot our i's and cross our t's. And outside of that, the next step is to investigate, trying to get an on-call pool of qualified consultants. The idea behind that is if an applicant wanted to facilitate their review by having their initial study mitigated negative declaration prepared by outside consultant, we will be assured that that consultant meets the county's requirements. Again, the idea is we don't want somebody to just prepare something, and then that delays the process because it doesn't meet our standards. We're also having some preliminary investigations with some surrounding universities. Typically, they will sometimes take on special projects called practicum. We have, I believe, UC Davis in our backyard and trying to work with them and see if they would be interested in maybe doing a practicum for the environmental review for some of these initial studies. And outside of that, it's just really just staff is grinding. I can't speak enough for the dedication for staff. I've also allowed them to, you know, work overtime and comp time. Overtime is not really, you know, we have budgetary constraints, but I've allowed staff to utilize those two tools. And, you know, they're just really taking on to it. We've done things like implement the phone tree and implement that frequently asked questions and update our website. A lot of time we have spent is for just answering basic questions that do track staff from actually processing permits. So, doing things like that to allow the public to self-serve, you know, five minutes per question doesn't seem like a lot, but if you have 60 calls per day, which is our average, that adds up, and that every time you take away from a project, that's another 20 minutes that someone is taking to get back into a groove. So, we're trying to take a holistic approach to getting through the backlog. And just to kind of put a fine point on it, we have an average, not average, we have 300 open permit applications that's for cannabis and non-cannabis. And just to kind of give a sense of scale, the typical community development department will have about 30 open permit applications per month. As typically, your community development department is charged with long-range planning. We are in the current, we're firmly in the current planning process. So, all of those things kind of just create a capacity constraint, which is leading to that backlog. And then every day, we have more projects coming in. I apologize if it sounds like a little bit of excuses, but I just really wanted to level set and show, you know, just put a fine point on what we're dealing with and some of the tips and tactics that we're trying to do to mitigate them.
I appreciate the details. I think, and not to say you left one out, but I also believe you're working on upgraded software and looking into what software would work for you, where people are able to catch on to, or be able to get the updates on the progress of their application online without having to directly contact staff. I think that would be good time-saving, and I think that's also embracing the 21st century tools that are in existence. And so, I'm happy that that's happening. I don't know what the timeline looks like for that, but hopefully that will be in the near future and not far off in the future. So, what I will do, and I appreciate all your comments today.
I forgot one, Chair Sabatia, I forgot one, I'm sorry. You rang a bell for me. We're also trying to become fully staffed out. Part of the reason why we have such a backlog as well, we're missing a principal planner and a senior planner. Those will be big, heavy lifts for us to get those key positions on board. So, just to really just kind of round out that we are in the middle of those recruitment processes and that we'll go a long way towards doing things like that development tracker that you mentioned, which is still in the beta, the beta testing phase.
Right.
And I apologize for interrupting.
No worries, no worries. Glad you got that in. So, I'm gonna offer four things that were on the memo, so everybody should have read this already. But three of them came directly from Deputy Director Thomas, and one of them is coming from our conversations that we've had together as well as with CDFA. So, the first one is publish a solicitation for an environmental review consultant firm to take all of the environmental reviews en masse with a turnaround of 60 days review slash complete environmental reviews from award date. From what I understand, and Deputy Director Thomas, I know you turned off your video camera, but I might ask you some questions. I believe that's something that you're already working on based on what you just said, correct? Okay. Number two, publish a solicitation to establish a pool of qualified environmental consultants. This list of recommended vetted consultants can be provided to cultivators to obtain their own outside environmental review if they would like to facilitate the process. At this moment, it sounds like that's also something that you're allowing and working on to get that, an expanded list.
That is correct.
Okay. And number three, again, something that you just spoke of as well, publish a solicitation to work with a local university to have a class prepare the environmental reviews for college credit, which again would allow us to be able to push some of these projects and SEQA analysis through. And this is the one that I am really hoping that we can have a good conversation about. Granted, I think the other three are part of the fix that we need to do for what we have today. But this one is a long-term fix, which will take a while. But at the end, when completed, will help almost make it an over-the-counter type of zoning clearance versus a use permit. And that's publish a solicitation requesting for a countywide programmatic EIR specifically for cannabis cultivation. Now, I dubbed something new. I would love to start calling where we can grow the inclusion zone. Not, let's not speak of where you can't do something, let's talk about where you can do something. And I think that if we do a programmatic EIR specifically tailored for the ordinance that we have for cannabis cultivation on the inclusion zone, then we have the environmental review done for us. I spoke to somebody who has done the programmatic EIR for Yolo County, for Trinity County, and Humboldt County. And his response was that it basically takes seven to 12 months is what he's anticipating, and that it would be basically over the counter, because the SEQA review would have been completed. Now, there's a public comment period that comes along, so it's like you have your public hearing for the entire county. And then when it's concluded, you don't have to go through those same processes anymore. Now, granted, again, the first three, if we keep pushing for more, and I hope that we can find more consultants, I hope that we can get UC Davis on board, that can help with the backlog that's happening within the next six months. This one is, would take a longer time period, but within a year, let's hope, we can have everything finalized, and then it would be an over-the-counter process to go through these applications. So, obviously, I spoke with my bias of my opinions of where I think our focus should be. I want to open it up for the board to discuss, or Deputy Director Thomas, if you have any other comments. I would suggest that a programmatic EIR is gonna cost some money. However, we've been collecting cannabis tax dollars and have very little tax dollars that have been utilized at this moment in time. I know a lot of people are saying, pay our people more. We have. And if we also can fill up those positions and there's a need for more, then we can have that conversation. I think that none of us are throwing anything off the table. We all want to be able to process those 300 applications, because those 300 applications is economic development for our entire county and what kind of services we can afford to have for every community member that lives in Lake County. And so, I think that that is good money spent on this programmatic EIR. It seems to be what has helped other communities and counties be able to fast and streamline their processes. And again, with speaking with CDFA, they are in favor of doing this as well. And that's always good to make sure that they are on board. So, opening it up for discussion as to any other ideas or discussion of the ideas that I've placed in front of us. Supervisor Price.
I'm glad that we were able to let the public know that we are dedicated to getting through this backlog. We've invested a lot of time and energy. We're investing a lot of other resources. The programmatic EIR is definitely where we should go. We should make that investment for next season. But for this season, we need to look at more contractors, possibly that process, you know, the whole permit. And get, you know, we just, we need more. We need to get through this process. We need staff to understand that bringing in this extra support doesn't impact our department in the long run. It just helps take, ease the burden of this. So, I want staff to understand that, you know, if we bring in more consultants, it's only to help, and then they'll be gone again. And we really need to get our community development department working on developing communities again and getting through this cannabis process, which we're all learning a lot. We need to grow more. We need to evolve more, adjust more, but we need to invest more too.
Thank you Supervisor. Any, anyone else with comments from the board?
No, just that I have one. Just kind of backing up, I appreciate hearing perspective from Takara. This has been a long road to navigate through. And we're also trying to calibrate while conducting business as usual, which makes it very, you know, burdensome. So, I appreciate everybody working with us on this, and I appreciate the work that the community development department puts forth, so.
Thank you Supervisor.
I would just like to thank Deputy Director Thomas for already going this direction that we're looking at today to try to minimize, you know, the application process, how long it takes. Because I know it's not just cannabis applications that are sitting there. We have many people trying to rebuild their homes, open businesses. So, I am definitely open to any and all things that we can do to try to get this, these seats through and passed and move on to the next thing. So, definitely open to that.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, just ultimate, you know, obviously to support community development. Once again, I know, you know, Supervisor Scott said it, there's, I know we're talking about cannabis right now, but, you know, you're inundated by just projects overall, you know, in Lake County, and you guys are doing everything that you can. I know with our class and comp study, hopefully you'll be able to be bringing on some more staff. I know we're early on in that process now, for those to hopefully take hold and make some changes for our recruitment and retention here in Lake County. And hopefully, we'll start to see the benefits of that over the next few months. And as we move through this, you know, I just want to make it clear to the board too, when we talk consultants, consultants just don't take the work off our community development department. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done in helping those consultants really come in and understanding where we want to go as Lake County. So, understanding, you know, what we're saying, it's just not a simple switch of, hey, we'll get you a consultant, and that's just gonna ease the job and make everything that much easier on community development. We are doing everything we can to help support you, but I just want you to know that we understand everything that you're saying. When the average is 300 applications right now, usually you're, you know, we're probably looking at 40 to 50 that are kind of the average that we should be dealing with. So, everybody in this conversation needs to understand there are challenges, we are moving forward with it, there are successes, and we'll continue to work on the path of moving things forward. But everyone needs to be patient as we work through this process. So, in support of the suggestions that were brought up today as they come back, but ultimately, everyone needs to understand the environment that we're working in. In a couple of years, I think we'll have these things worked out, but it's gonna take time.
Thank you Supervisor. I just, real quick, want to speak to the staff. I know that it's difficult when you're so overwhelmed to be able to complete projects. It's always nice to check boxes, and it's really difficult when you have so many boxes to juggle. And I know that it's stressful to deal with applicants who are also stressed, and understandably so. There's a lot of commitment, there's a lot of investment that has been put into this type of industry to come to Lake County and to go through the process. In my mind and my heart, I believe that we're trying to find a perfect balancing act on, what do we do to continue this year and make sure that it's not to the detriment of the future of Lake County? That it's not to the detriment of our staff becoming sick due to stress of what they're dealing with? And that it's not to the detriment of the applicants who feel like they are not getting anything on their investment. That is why I wanted to make sure that we coalesce all these items together, talking about how to ensure those things with our early activation process, while also having the discussion on ensuring you that we are trying our best to decrease the timeline. I would like to see direction from the board to request, and I've spoken privately with Ms. Grant, our county council, to start working on a RFP for a categorical or programmatic EIR based on the ordinance that we currently have in place, so that we can go ahead and bring back the bids that we've received to the board and approve and look at approving that contract to get that started. I think that is the best way to go to ensure that we have a light at the end of our tunnel, because right now it's difficult to see. But again, going back to staff, I just want to mention some of the things that you're working on. I know in South County Supervisor Simon is really proud of all the work that's happening down there. We have two golf courses that are being worked on literally by the top two architectures in the world who design golf courses. If we can complete those things, we will become a golfing Mecca in California, possibly the United States. We are working on some resorts, we are working on some local businesses, and you've also helped create almost an equal amount of funding that comes from property taxes in this cannabis industry that is settled here. The work that is being done through that department is immense. I want to make sure that we provide you the tools to be successful and feel successful, because nothing is worse than going home on a daily basis and feeling like you weren't able to accomplish something. But just know that you are a very large cog in our wheel for the county at this moment, and we want to help you. And I think that these steps that we're taking will help provide some of that relief for everybody, including the applicants. And if the applicants feel the relief, then I'm sure that our staff will start to feel that relief as well. So, I would like to see us provide that direction to county council to go ahead and start working on that RFP. I would like to see our Deputy Director, Ms. Thomas, also continue on her research with UC Davis to see if they can become a viable tool in this SEQA process, and also looking to include more consultants to help us through the SEQA process. And yes, consultants do take up a little bit of time in order to get them up to speed with what we're looking for. We're still gonna have to review their work in the long run too, but it decreases the capacity need from our staff at least a portion of the entire process. And any amount that we can decrease is good, as far as I'm concerned. So, that's the direction I would like to provide and looking for either a motion or a consensus for that to be done. And, and, hold on, sorry, I have not opened up public comment for item number C, and so let's make sure and do that. And I apologize that this item is quite lengthy, but as you can see, this is an important part right now in the history of Lake County. And we need to make sure that we get everyone's perspective and feedback on this as we navigate through some of our hardships that we're dealing with. And so, let's go ahead and open up to the public, and the first hand I see comes from Lathan Martinez. If we can go ahead and unmute Lathan, please.
I'm glad I got the first one in. So, Lathan Martinez, sorry that
Well, I'm glad I got the first one in. So Lathan Martinez, uh sorry that I was feeding my kid blueberries and it unmuted me. I'm sure you guys heard that. Um but definitely, the first thing I'd like to say is thank you to staff. Obviously, I think I know how hard they're working because of my experience. I'm an environmental engineer. I've permitted a hundred and eight grows in California. Um Trinity, Humboldt, Mendocino, and Lake County. Uh so you know, thank you to staff and and directly thank you to to Bruno or to Supervisor Sabatier because he's taken a lot of time with me and my group. So I represent Nug, Trinity Reserve, and Sundial Collective. Um he's taken a lot of time to help us navigate all these issues. So first of all, thank you. Um the programmatic, the the E I R that you're talking about, which Trinity and Mendocino did as well, takes a long time. Trinity's been doing it for two years and they're not done. Part that's partially because uh Trinity has a group of people who are kind of fighting cannabis, which I'm sure Lake County has and is going to continue to have. Um so it's a little different up there politically, but than Lake County, but it's definitely going to take some time. So I would just say it's a great idea to do. It will help every project once it's complete. I still really believe that having a clear pathway for early activations this year and M U Ps for this year, which I think everyone's kind of talking about, is really important. Um mainly the early activation. I know someone spoke earlier about about this and I'm not trying to get off topic, but uh you know, if if you're done and you're in, we should be able to get early activated because we have a season. And if we if we have a couple of months of not being licensed, it can ruin not only the whole season, but the whole business that is going to invest in Lake County. So I would just you know, if we if we have good players who are paying taxes and in good standing, I think the cleanest pathway for them is the most important. And getting a an E I R done in Lake County will really help that. Uh again, I just don't want to miss the fact that if if for me in particular and my groups, if if we don't have licensing complete uh for this year, we'll go under. And I think likely a lot of other people would be in the same position because of the amount of money we've all invested in Lake County. So that's it. Sorry if I took more than three minutes.
Thank you very much. And let's go ahead and up already unmuted Jennifer Smith. You're next. Jennifer.
I don't think Jennifer Smith has audio connected.
Okay. Um can you hear me now?
Oh, there you are. You're on a phone.
Hi. Hi, uh Jennifer Smith. I'm a Lake County cultivator and also president of the Lake County Cannabis Alliance. I know that you already heard from us in an official capacity, but I just wanted to uh put in some of my personal thoughts. Um some of this is re- repeat repetitive and some of it um is specific to Part C. And thank you. I think Takara and your team have hit the nail on the head with some of the um planning that you have for outside uh consultants. I'm not sure that everybody in the process in the past has understood that they can even have an outside consultant do their initial study. This is a huge leap and bound and time saver for everybody. Um I believe that one of the objectives that we all thought early activation uh should help with is getting these projects vetted and licensed licensed in as timely a manner as possible. And I think the piece that we need to go back and look at is an ability to concurrently apply it to state. If we could define some sort of point in which your application is deemed complete enough that you have permission to apply. This is not a permission to plant. This is a permission to apply to the state because the state will not do anything on behalf of your application until you have local authorization. That is the very first piece. Um and it won't move forward. And for anybody not in the know of this process, the state can take anywhere from two to six months. So we are in, farmers are in jeopardy of losing whole seasons if that application process can't start. Um we'd like to also talk about above ground planting. I think we need to recognize the impact that delivery trucks will have. Uh the garbage and waste created by by the packaging that pots come in. Um some pots are actually plastic themselves. So I think this would need to be reconsidered. Um we need to recognize that previously disturbed lands are just that and should perhaps be exempt from this part portion. Uh and long term, if we are planted above ground, these farms will not be able to participate in the cannabis appellation program and unable to promote itself as a product of Lake County, which is something I think we all strive to do and bring light to the success of Lake County. Um third concern is the ability to change site plans. I'm concerned with this restriction because at some point these projects do need to evolve. Farming practices evolve. Um finances evolve. And it seems counterintuitive to make changes after a full use permit hearing. Um and even then, it becomes a very difficult process. So at some point, um would like to see some latitude on how or a way, just not that it can't be done, but a way that it can be done. And finally, or not finally, um I'd like to look at the six month expiration of early activation. It seems like those early activations should be good for a calendar year because not everybody plants in June. Nobody knows exactly when they're going to get their early activation. And if your early activation is awarded sometime in April or May, you run the risk of being out of compliance with the state because that early activation could expire. Um and finally, I will continue to advocate for countywide programmatic E I R. Um it could streamline this entire process. At that point, it becomes a zoning ordinance. There are checkboxes. And we can move this process along much faster. Um hopefully, we can all work together to find a way that this is less of a burden and more of a success story for our county and its staff. And then I'll open the questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Uh next hand was Caleb O'Connor.
Well, thank you again. And I wanted to um reach out my appreciation to the staff. I keep in touch with the planning department regularly. I know how overworked they are and frustrated they are. And that no one ever promised me early activation. And I knew it was something that you had to apply for, but I'm just stating that it's it's easier to operate within the known. And so I'm glad to hear all the discussions amongst you, Board of Supervisors, especially with you, with the intent of your heart and mind, trying to streamline the process, make it more effective. I think that's a given. My concern is that if it's going to take two years for the E I R, if it's going to take that kind of time period for uh, you know, to to kind of streamline the process, I'm wondering how relevant it's going to be in the current market with the likelihood of federal legalization uh hitting other states, hitting other places and allowing um you know, easier cultivation like the state of Oklahoma. Um but I just wanted to to lend support to the two former uh speakers that commented and just saying that I agree wholeheartedly with everything they had to say. And I'm just trying to find a way of navigating these new ordinances and trying to grasp and understand what I'm up against in pursuing early activation so that I, as an investor, can either pull the trigger on these properties or walk away. And that's all I'm asking. And so I, again, I'm appreciative to the thought and insight that you're all giving to it. I think that a two-year timeframe is unrealistic uh in the current in the current situation that we're seeing with, like I said, federal legalization and other states kind of starting to get involved. And I would hate to see all of the all of the current investment go to waste. Uh and all of this current thought just not being in the right time at the right, you know, the right place at the right time, kind of like any investment. And I'm kind of starting to see that that could potentially be a likelihood. And that's my only comment. And again, I appreciate uh very much all the thought and consideration that you folks have put into this.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and move on to Crystal Keesey.
Good afternoon. Um thanks for being, giving me the opportunity to comment again. I'd like to talk about the streamlining of information to the public. Back when uh Miraya Turner was at the Community Development Department, there was an amazing Lake County had what I considered the best website for cannabis application information in the state. It had every general question in an F A Q. It had all the applications that you needed available for download. It also had a timeline with linked documents of every single development in cannabis regulation in Lake County. So I know that um um Ms. Thomas said that they field sixty phone call, five-minute phone calls a day. I bet you could cut that down by fifty percent or seventy-five percent if that wonderful website came back. Some somewhere down the line, it disappeared. And that's been the worst thing for myself as an environmental consultant, trying to provide um up-to-date information to my clients about the state of things in um cannabis in Lake County. Um and I think that if that information was provided again, um it would also facilitate um streamlining and lessen the burden on the definitely overtaxed community development department. I'd also like to lend my support to Jennifer Smith's comment that we need some kind of concurrent local permission letter to the state to allow our state licensing to move forward. That's absolutely needed because just to use myself as an example, last year our early activation was awarded in May. And C D F A was furious that it was that we received it in May. It took till September to receive our state license. And um planting in September is quite difficult for a crop that needs to grow over the summer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And let's go ahead and unmute Lisa Bagrova.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to talk to a little bit about the program E I R. I think that's an excellent way to look at the entire county as a whole, rather than putting the individual um environmental documents onto partic- each particular project. With the caveat of allowing this E A program to go to continue to go through while that if that process is initiated. There's ability to, you know, send out real-time billing um agreements to these applicants who are willing and wanting to move forward with this process to ensure that county staff has the funds to facilitate this type of um endeavor. And also, you know, requiring real-time billing for those projects that are able to be um contracted out to staff that can expedite the reviews um for the for the projects in process. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh I see there's a hand up for Mr. Martinez. I'm going to put that on hold for a second. Let's go ahead and open it up for the rest of the public who has not spoken yet, and then we'll come back to that.
All right, I sent a uh an unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Yeah, my name is Sean.
Let's go ahead and start with Sean Connell.
Yeah, my name is Sean Connell. I had spoke earlier. I just, I'm I'm hearing a lot of conversation about a programmatic E I R. And I I just want to make sure that we've all understand that C D F A requires project-specific project descriptions for each permit. Uh your neighbor in County Mendocino County did a programmatic E I R and mitigated negative debt. Um and they have essentially been on provisional license since the inception of their program. So as we talk about an E I R, while that may address the local concerns, we need to make sure that it is congruent with the state of California and what they're looking for in order to process annual licenses. Additionally, I I do want to put out there that this California, the State of California Food and Ag Department has put out sequel guidance for writing sequel project descriptions and documents that is available by other counties. It is not available through Lake County's website. I can't find any information as far as what the qualifications are for completing these types of documents. Um I do know that I've heard Takara talk about having third-party resource um consultants. Uh my question on that is if I'm paying a third-party consultant to conduct my initial study as an applicant, am I also paying the county that initial study fee? Um and who at that county would be reviewing those initial studies? Would those also be referred out to a third party? Um and then what does it cost the app to the applicant based on that? Um you know, Mendocino County has had the biggest issue with their large address of how cannabis under regulations would be compliant with state guidelines. Um they've been fighting for over three years now to have even a streamlined ability to have their applicants have an annual license. As far as how early activation ties into C D F A licenses, you don't need an early activation in order to get qualifications from C D F A. What you need is you need to have a major use permit application accepted by the planning department. And when the contact is made from C D F A, they have sixty days to respond from planning back to the state. With early activation, it reduces that timeline down to ten days, which means that if the planning department doesn't respond at the state level, they accept that as a approval. Which means that you're you use early activation to reduce your administrative review timeline at the state level to expedite your state issued permit. So you know, those are some real big things that need to be talked about because while we could spend money on doing a programmatic E I R for the whole county, if it's not accepted at the state level and applicants are still required to do site-specific project descriptions, then I feel like that's a waste of money for the county and ultimately doesn't achieve the goal. And with that, I'll let you go. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments. And I don't see any more hands up. And we'll we'll get to uh Deputy Director Thomas in a second. Let's go ahead and finish these public comments. Let's see if there's any more. Somebody on iPhone. You're unmuted.
Hi, uh Mr. Sabatier. This is Michael Wegner.
Okay.
And uh thank you guys again for putting all this stuff together. I think some really important aspects to everything we're talking about have been made um and really specified by Sean just a moment earlier. Um everything that we're doing, making sure that it's consistent or what goes into the next step at the state level is very, very important. Otherwise, it 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 tampers the entire point of what everyone's doing. So any of the changes that you guys make, um I I hope that you take it into reflection of of how that's going to work in the future. And again, Sean's point about how it's gone for Mendocino, um it's not gone so well with some of the things they have done. So maybe using portions of what they've done, maybe not the whole thing uh with a little bit of a change or a tweak to it might be a more appropriate way to go about it. Um secondly, uh as far as funding for all of this stuff, I think you made the point that there's actually been a substantial amount of tax dollars that have been collected uh based on these early activations and the current major use permits that are being used. So it would seem like there's plenty of funding to get these things uh done, whether it's consultants or whatever program we think we can use. I think that the funds are there. Um and we should, we should implement them into or point specific to where they came from. Um with that, you know, a lot of people made a lot of different comments today. All of them super relevant uh and to the point. So I'm not going to waste anybody's time by saying I agree with all of it. Uh but I think everybody's made some very good points and we're moving forward in the right direction. At the same time, there is a major time crunch as far as what the federal government will be doing in the future. And I think everybody in the industry knows that that is going to happen a lot faster than we'd previously thought. Um so any way we can keep our county in the right position at the right time, like was said before, I think is going to be really important in the future for the future of cannabis and the future of Lake County. And uh thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Before we bring it back to the board. Okay, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. Is there any new comments or questions from the board before we look at taking some action or direction?
I think Deputy Director Thomas had something she wanted to add.
Thank you for reminding me. She turned off her video and I I forgot. I got distracted.
No, I just wanted to make myself available for any clarification to the board if there was um any needed before we open it back up.
Uh would would you be able to respond to the question uh that was asked by Mr. Connell about, I believe it was uh uh do you still have to pay for the uh sequel review process uh through the um planning division if you're going outside to go with a consultant? Can you uh explain that process since that was requested?
Of course. So that will probably be a two-pronged um decision tree. So if you, decision one, if you wanted to decided to keep your um environment review with the county, um you will pay for that initial um of fee, which covers forty hours. And then uh per our application as outlined today, if we go over those forty hours, you have to um the county will send you an invoice for any additional uh work. So that's if staff writes it, right? So then if we decide to go outside with an outside consultant, yes, the consult, um the applicant will still have to pay for those um those um consulting fees. Now, they could make a decision to contract on their own, completely outside of the county's process. Um but again, whoever they select would have to meet the county's requirement. And so just to reiterate, yes, if you do go through the And so just to reiterate, yes, if you do go through the county and staff writes it, or if the county contracts with an outside consultant, the applicant is on the hook for those fees. Or if they decide to go out on their own and obtain a consultant, they will have to pay for those fees.
And also, I believe you wanted to cover the analysis is for the whole project?
I'm sorry, repeat that question one more time?
You wanted me to remind everyone that the CEQA analysis is for the whole project, and I'm guessing just not the EA portion.
Oh, yeah, so I can address that a little bit more. What that means is when we do an environmental review of a project, it has to apply for the project as a whole. There were some comments I've heard before about previously disturbed land, and yes, that is correct. There are some exemptions that exist for previously disturbed land, but that exemption would have to apply for the entire project. So if you are cultivating, you're bringing in trucks, you're impacting traffic, you're impacting digging into the ground, you're impacting the air quality. There are about sixteen different items on the CEQA checklist. So whatever exemption that is applied will have to apply for the entire project as a whole, not just the actual cultivation digging into the ground. So that's one of those sticky parts about CEQA where it's a little bit vague, and you have to really dig into the details of the project and ensure that whatever analysis that you're providing provides to the entire project as a whole. There is another comment that I've heard a couple of times that I would like to respond to. If we do go through with the programmatic EIR, there are pathways to help facilitate the provision of licensing would be ministerial, but you would still have to follow the CEQA tiering process. That just would make it a lot more streamlined because you'll be able to provide that project description. Every single project has to have a full project description, whether we do the CEQA analysis for each individual project or if we do go out with a programmatic EIR. That's just one of those things that we simply cannot get away from. And of course, if we do decide to go along the route for a programmatic EIR, we would flesh out all of those details with whomever the consultant is that is selected. So I just want to reiterate that it is a streamlined process. It does make it ministerial, but there is some level of review to ensure that when you're tiering off of that CEQA process, it's still consistent with CEQA.
Thank you so much for those comments. So back to the board, any questions or comments? And are we ready for action?
Ready for action.
Okay. Waiting on you.
So do you, are you gonna, you want a resolution or a motion?
Well, I would say let's, I would like to make it a solid public statement of the direction we would like to go rather than just a consensus, but it's up to you guys. I'm not the one making the motion. If you feel more comfortable with just consensus and direction, I'm fine with that.
Just on C.
Right? Yes, I'm looking at C. Sorry, Supervisor Pyska, didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's okay. Well, if we're if we're we're just, we're asking county council to look into the programmatic EIR, and we're asking Takara building efficiencies with staffing options. So would that be a resolution or consensus?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Graham.
That can be done by consensus or by motion, since this is direction to staff. In this case, consensus is appropriate, but if if you want more formal action, then it can be I move to direct. That's up to your board.
Thank you, Ms. Graham.
Okay, then I will make a motion. I move to direct staff on item C of consideration of six point four, consideration of early activation changes, efficiency processes, or to look to efficiencies and processes.
Basically, following the one through four.
Yes, following the one through.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Johanna, if we can please get a roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska? I think she's perfect. Okay, thanks. And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. And I did fail to mention, the whole reason for this conversation comes from the fact that CDFA was very worried about the provisional licenses that we're kind of all stuck in, and SB fifty-nine is an important bill that will help relieve some of that if they extend the provisional licenses and under EA, all you can get is a provisional. If you get a use permit, you can now get an annual. So this put a little bit of a problem for us to face, but at the same time, we also need to make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's on our CEQA processes that we're going through with these early activations. So this was an important topic to bring forward. I appreciate everyone's comments and the conversation that we had. It is one oh two PM. I think it's time that we take a break for lunch. What do you guys think about coming back at one forty-five?
Well, that's fine. I just want to let you know that the next item I'd like to continue to next week, six point five, so we can take that next week at ten forty-five if that works for you.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and take care of that item real quick. Any comments from the board about moving that item forward to next week?
I'd be in favor of that, but I know that we need to check for, you know, if that's if that's available with Carol and Johanna.
Yes, Mr. Chair, it is a good time for next week.
Okay, and since we have it on our agenda, I'll open it up for public comments about moving the item, not specifically about the item itself. Let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room, please, Jake.
All right, I've sent an unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none, then we will go ahead and move that item to the following week, and now we will be on our items. Seven are non-timed items. I think we should take a lunch specifically for staff to be able to take the break that they need. Let's go ahead and meet back here at one fifty. Everyone's good with that?
Yes.
Okay, see you then. Thank you, everybody. Okay, it's one fifty PM. Just wanted to kind of check in with the roll call. I believe that all our supervisors are back. Supervisor Crandall was here. He just has his video off. Ms. Hutchinson, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, do we have Johanna?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. And is Ms. Graham here?
Present, sir.
All right, I think that's the gang. So is everybody ready to go? Sam and Jake checking in?
On this end.
Okay, got a thumbs up and an okay. All right, welcome back, everybody. It's one fifty PM. Supervisor Crandall's coming back in. And we left off, we had finished all of our timed items, gone through our consent agenda and have already done seven point one, so we will continue on with seven point two. Consideration of the following advisory board appointments. Agriculture Advisory Committee, Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council, Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee. And I will, it says clerk of the board, but I'm going to ask for Supervisor Pyska or Supervisor Scott, since you asked to create the agricultural advisory committee, if you can get started on any comments or presentation you'd like to make.
I would yield to Supervisor Pyska, since this is her committee.
Thank you. I looked over all the suggestions, and we have more than enough applicants to fill the roles that we were looking for. For the processing, we have Pat Scully from Scully Packing, so I think that would fit. And I also believe that they they grow pears too. So the other thing I was looking for is a lot of overlap with the applicants. Charles Randall Cragg was the applicant that applied for the organic slot, and he was the only one. And then the other three were for different crops throughout our county with one of them being cannabis. And we had some applicants turn in yesterday, but I'm going to stick to the ones that made the deadline. So Alicia Russell from Pro Farms was the only cannabis applicant that made it in on time, and she also has processing too. So again, some overlap there. And then Sharon Zoller, this was her idea, and she was one of the first people to apply. She has a background in grapes, pears, and walnuts, so I think it's great that she be on the board too. So we have two possibilities for the wine grape position, and that would be Bruce Merrily's or David Weiss. And I don't know if any of you have thoughts on that. I have a good relationship with Bruce Merrily, so I would probably just pick him because I know him, but I know that David Weiss is also a longtime grower in our area. So those are my recommendations. I'm just trying to figure out between those two for the grape growers and if anybody has any thoughts. I'd love to hear them.
All right, and I believe it goes all the way from the top down to Rhonda Armstrong, or is that Scotts Valley? Oh, sorry, that's the Scotts Valley Community Advisory. My mistake. So all the way down to Russell Kramer. Any comments or questions from the board? On those appointments? Okay, seeing none. I will say that while looking at it, I find that it's very very Big Valley centric, and I would like to look at Russell Kramer, who does have a ranch down in Lower Lake, as well as grazing land in the city of, or just outside of the city of Clear Lake. That way, there would be a District One and District Two representation on this advisory committee, as agriculture is definitely surrounding the entire county, not specific to the Big Valley area. He does grow hay. He does have walnuts, and as I said earlier, grazing cattle as well on his land with fifty years of agricultural experience as well. And so if that's a possibility, that I would like to suggest that he'd be able to be on the board as well.
Well, I'm looking at Bruce and David as, because they also have held positions with the Wine Grape Commission. And that's really the slot that I was looking for. With the other crops, when we have just the three crops, we've got cannabis as one. And then I'm pretty committed to keeping Sharon because this, she has helped me along with this committee. So then the open slot would be the wine grape slot. And I don't know if Russ is a wine grape grower or part of the Wine Grape Commission. I feel like there needs to be representation there.
And is there any way to looking at the overlap between Pat Scully and Alicia Russell? I do not believe, and I could be wrong, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I do not believe that Scully grows the pears. I believe they just process and package the pears.
From past conversations, I've heard that they put in some pears, but I think having our biggest processor in our county, longtime processor, be the pears and the pear sheds. I think we have to stick to that and appreciate that we have overlap with cannabis processing, but that's its first year, and the pear sheds are longstanding industry. And I know that this is Big Valley heavy, but this really is the, you know, the bulk of our ag industry here.
Any other comments from other supervisors or questions before we open it up for the public?
No.
Okay, seeing none. Let's go ahead and open up to the public, and let's go ahead and unmute Brenna Sullivan, who's got her hand up.
Hi, Supervisors. This is Brenna Sullivan from the Lake County Farm Bureau. First, I just really want to thank Jessica for continuing on and putting together this ag committee. I do want to offer kind of some points to consider. To answer Supervisor Sabatier's question on the Scullies, yes, they do grow pears. In fact, they grow a significant acreage of pears in the Big Valley area. And Pat Scully was one person that I immediately thought of when I first heard about this committee. As far as the wine grape seat, both Bruce and David would be excellent members on the committee. They just are really both excellent growers. They can offer different perspectives. You know, Bruce is a smaller grower. David also farms a significant acreage across the county. He was another person that I first thought of when I heard about this committee. I do want to say that both Pat Scully and David Weiss have been leaders in the labor force issue in Lake County, especially regarding COVID nineteen. They were involved in the initial meetings with Dr. Case over the summer and have a tremendous amount of experience, both in local labor issues and really all all issues across Lake County agriculture. So you know, I don't want to recommend one person over the other just to offer that perspective, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on anyone else.
Thank you very much. If we have any other public comments, Jake, if we can open up the Zoom room, please.
All right, I have sent an unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the board, and I've said my piece, so let's take the action or have a further conversation.
I'm ready to take the action. I Mr. Chair, I move that Sharon Zoller, Bruce Merrily's, Alicia Russell, Charles Randall Cragg, and Pat Scully be appointed to the Agriculture Advisory Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Johanna, if we could please get a roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes. That was for the ag advisory committee, and next is our Scotts Valley Community Advisory with Rhonda Armstrong. Any comments or questions on that?
Just that Rhonda is a current member, and I would love to for her to continue serving on the Scotts Valley Advisory Committee.
Okay, any further comments or questions from the board? Okay, let's go ahead and reopen up the Zoom room for that, please.
All right, I've sent an unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none. Let's go ahead and bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Rhonda Armstrong to the Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Johanna, if we can please get a roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee, we have Paulino Yanez as an applicant. He is from District Two, and I'd be happy to see him continue in his position that he's been in for the past, I believe, two years, maybe one year. But I absolutely approve of his appointment. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room one last time for this item, please, Jake.
All right, I have sent an unmute request out to the All right, I have sent an unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, let's go ahead and bring it back for action. If somebody can please take care of that motion.
I'll go ahead and move. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, EJ.
I'll go ahead and move move to appoint Paulino Yanez to the Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee.
And I will second.
Thank you for that. We have a motion and a second. Johanna, roll call, please.
Uh okay Supervisor Simon.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott. Supervisor Paeska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm looking at the next item, and I'm not seeing uh, oh, there we go. We have Director Pomeroy here, so let's open up item seven point three. Consideration to approve advanced step hiring of Ms. Eileen Harmon in the position of Public Health Nurse Senior at Step Five due to candidate's extraordinary qualifications. Director Pomeroy.
Thank you, Chair Sabatier, and good afternoon Supervisors. So as your board is well aware, um Public Health has had a really difficult time hiring these positions, especially of a Public Health Nurse, which is a special certification past an RN. And especially someone with, you know, this many years of experience. This candidate comes to us with um over thirty years of experience, twelve years directly with other counties in public health. And she also has um specific uh training and um experience in programs that we serve here in Lake County, including Foster Care, Children's Health and Disability Services, California Children's Services, Communicable Disease. And to find a candidate of this caliber is extremely rare for us. And with her experience and her years of service, we graciously request you, your board, to approve Step Five for this candidate so we can get her on board.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Any questions or comments from the board on this item? Okay, hearing none. I I I will say that this is a conflicting moment for me on this due to the situation in your staffing in order to fill it up. And with COVID nineteen still being uh, still requiring a lot from your staff. But at the same time, I'm conflicted because of the recent changes that we've made in the classing comp study. And and I I I don't believe that this has gone through the classing comp classing comp committee and wondering if it's something that can be discussed there. I know we've also discussed um the possibility of incentives in one of our previous meetings, uh when we were discussing uh, I forget the item, but I think it was two weeks ago that we were discussing that. I think it was during our cannabis tax conversation, actually. And wondering if that's something that uh could help. I just, I I I, again, I'm conflicted on uh how this will be taken by our staff, but at the same time, I I don't want to let go of somebody that's qualified and wondering if that's a process that we can make sure this goes through and see if we can make it happen efficiently, uh so that we don't lose this candidate, since the qualifications are definitely there. So that that's my feelings and concerns on that. Any comments from the board um based on what I just said? If that's a good direction or if that's not the right direction?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um you know, I kind of had with this agenda item coming to the board also. We have the classing comp uh committee that we have. I know it's convened, um and as we're trying to work through our new classing comp study that we put together, I think it would be appropriate that it goes uh to the class comp study. You know, I know that uh CAO Hutchinson also is on uh, looks like she has her mic off. But yeah, that would be my recommendation also.
So your board, I, while I can appreciate all of that, you know, somebody with this many years of experience is making way more than Step Five in other counties. We're still a good twenty percent below um our other medical facilities. And a PHN is such a hard certification to fill, and they're required, they're mandated in these programs. And we've are, we're gonna, we're gonna lose this candidate, and we've already lost so many. I really would appreciate your board's reconsideration of this um for Step Five to help this department. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Supervisor Scott? We're not gonna let you speak. There you go.
How long have we been looking for this position? How long was it offered?
Years. Seriously, years. I mean, we have not hired a PHN in probably two years.
And that's because nobody was qualified or nobody would work for us for the money we were?
Nobody will, nobody will accept the amount of pay, including this client. This is her kind of bottom line. No one will accept the pay. We have interviews, people apply. When we tell them the salary, they will not accept it.
I have a quick question for timeline purposes. Ms. Hutchinson, when is the next classing composite just when it's called to convene, or is there a specific schedule?
I, well, if your board directs that this go to the committee, I'm planning to convene it right away so we can have this item back on the agenda for next next week. I understand the urgency of this, and I understand the struggle this department has had with nurses. So we're not suggesting a long delay. I just uh would like to see the committee have an opportunity to review this request and bring it back next Tuesday.
And any uh further comments Supervisor Crandall?
So it will come back next Tuesday with the same um, the same issue, I mean, the same request? Or are we just looking at a different color counter offer or something like that?
Well, I I would yield to the committee to review it, and so I don't think we know the answer to that yet. But I, but the point I'm making is that we'll bring it right back.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments from Supervisors?
Just that I'd be willing to go one more week to have the committee look at it and come back with a recommendation.
Okay, uh let's go ahead and open it up to the public and then come back to the board. Jake, if we can please open up the Zoom room.
All right. Locked the meeting. Okay, I've sent an unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. Uh I I'd like to uh offer two um potential ways to look at resolving this. I I'm I'm still nervous about doing the Step Five, and again, it's mainly not an issue of the qualifications. It's an issue of the uh nine hundred plus other staff who uh will be looking at uh, looking at this as as uh and scrutinizing our decision here versus the decision that we've made for the classing comp study. And I'm wondering, because I know HR has the capability to approve, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Hutchinson, but up to Step Three, uh if the qualifications are there. So I would love to, if that hasn't gone through the process, which I I didn't see that in the memo, so I'm guessing that that was not the case unless I'm mistaken, that maybe going through that process, and if HR finds that the qualifications are there in order to meet Step Three, that that would be approved, and let's see what the applicant says to that. And also ask for the classing comp to look at the review. That way, we have options as to what can and cannot be possible, rather than just having one option. That way, we can make sure to uh try to look at this from different angles and ways to find resolution.
So the client has already declined, the applicant has already declined anything lower than Step Five?
Okay, I guess that leaves us with only one option, at least for me, one option to send it back to the classing comp to take a look at that. That that is uh it's hard. Any other comment from Supervisors on this?
No.
Okay, um I guess with the consensus, is that the direction we wish to go?
Yes.
Back to the classing comp study? And and I know that um that is not the decision you were looking for today, Director Pomeroy. But we hope that we can find some way to to make it work. Again, um we appreciate all the work that your department does, uh but we have to look at uh how uh this impacts the overall process in moving through the new era post-class and comp. And I know that we're trying to be mindful and careful of how we uh move into that situation because uh part of these steps in the past is what brought us to the situation of having to redo our classing comp and doing some as quickly as this uh is tough, is tough. So hopefully, the classing comp committee can come back next week and and provide some insight as to what that discussion and what the end result is.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and to keep it simple, what I would ask is the Assistant Court of the Board just carry the agenda item over as is. So we don't even have to submit anything new, but we will have a recommendation from the committee.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Director Pomeroy. Next is item seven point four, consideration of notification of increase and concealed carry weapon class fees. And I'm sorry, I did not look for up. There he is. Sheriff Martin is here with us with Lieutenant Bingham.
Good afternoon. This item is brought to the board. We're seeking to, I know this is kind of out of the normal um fee schedule process, but uh I think this matter needs some attention. We haven't increased our fees in many years regarding this, and we're looking for a fee increase that accurately reflects uh the increase in costs of providing this training. In order to be issued a CCW, each person has to go through a background check, which consists of fingerprints and a review of their criminal history, an interview with one of our range masters, and then an approved course of training. This fee would affect the cost of the course of training that we require. People are also able to go out and and seek certification through several authorized vendors in the community. However, they're still required to pay some of the fees associated with our work and fees that are required and mandated by the Department of Justice. Do we need a itemized breakdown on the amount of the cost of the fees?
I think it would be good for the public to know, since it will impact the public.
Okay, I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Bingham. He's very familiar with the the breakdown of the costs.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board. So basically, what we're looking at right now is is we teach CCW classes in-house. We teach both a basic course, which is a sixteen hour course, and a renewal course, which is an eight hour course. Our current fees that we are charged for a renewal course is a deputy instructor fee, an administrative fee, a range fee, a permit fee, and then the California Department of Justice fee. In the past, our deputy instructor fees, we charge twenty-five dollars per student, per CCW holder for a deputy instructor fee. We're looking to increase that by thirty dollars to fifty-five dollars, which would accurately accurately represent what we actually pay our instructors to instruct these courses for CCW applicants. We're looking at adding an administrative fee. We have an administrative person here in the sheriff's office that does the applications, receiving applications, processing applications, coordinating CCW holders with interviews, and then coordinating their classes and giving them classes, and then issuing them the permit fees uh or the permits. We're looking at a thirty-one dollar increase, or adding a thirty-one dollar administrative fee to recoup those costs. We have a range fee of twenty-five dollars per CCW holder. That goes to electrical, power, water. It goes to the targets that are used by CCW holders, which is a cost to the sheriff's office. It goes to range maintenance. The range takes a lot of maintenance. Then also brass cleanup and disposable brass and trash that are left on the range by CCW holders. There's a six dollar permit fee, and that is governed under California Penal Code two six one nine zero. That can be a maximum of a ten dollar fee. We have it set as a six dollar fee. We think that's appropriate. And to believe that that was what the fee was in the past and what it is now, we think it's appropriate to live where it's at. California Department of Justice requires a fifty-two dollar fee for processing of the CCW permit by the California Department of Justice. That is the fee set by them, and we have no control over that. That is for an eight hour renewal course. For a sixteen hour basic course, um which is your initial course that you have to take, your initial application to get your CCW permit, the fees are the same as far as the administrative fee and the range fee. We're looking to increase the daily per day fee for deputy instructor time of thirty dollars. So it'd be a total of a hundred and ten dollars for a two-day class, total of sixteen hours of instruction, classroom time and range time. The permit fee stays the same as six dollars. The other fees that are set in this is that is the sheriff's office fingerprint rolling fee, which is twenty dollars. That's set for across the board for anybody who comes to the sheriff's office to get life scanned. Fingerprints, we set it at twenty dollars. And then the California Department of Justice, initial CCW fee is ninety-three dollars. Again, that is set by the Department of Justice, not by us, and we don't have any latitude in in that, and that's paid by the CCW holder.
Perfect, thank you very much. Anything further from Sheriff Martin?
That's all. I had a little bit of feedback that was emailed to me from over the community expressing that they would like to see no fees and that this is an infringement on constitutional rights. This in no way infringes on anybody's constitutional rights. You don't need a CCW to purchase or possess firearms or ammunition. You can simply do that. As far as no cost, hey, I'd be great. If there's a way to do this without any cost to the taxpayers, I'm all for that, but I don't see any way to do this without incurring um some significant expenses. And the people that participate in this program should bear those expenses. I I responded to the person that, you know, if you want to drive, you you could certainly do that. And if you want to drive your own car, you have to pay registration fees. Nobody else should be responsible for those costs. So um we're not looking to make a profit. We're looking to stop um losing money on this program. It's a very important program. I've been a very big supporter of CCW rights within the county during my time in office. It's a very important thing for people that live, especially in rural California, that they have the ability to protect themselves. So I just want to make sure this remains a viable program again. Yeah, I don't I don't like increasing costs, but I also want to make sure that we use taxpayer dollars in the most appropriate manner.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation, gentlemen. If we can open it up for the board to have questions and comments. Hearing none, I do want to do a little bit more of a breakdown based on numbers that I see because the increases would be a total of three hundred and ten dollars in fees for a new applicant and a hundred and sixty-nine dollars in renewal. If you break that down by the sixteen hours, that's twenty dollars an hour, a little bit less than that. It's actually nineteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. The fact that there's two deputies that are teaching that class, I don't think really actually covers the true costs of what it costs for us to have two deputies there. So questioning the the cost of it when we're asking for a specific service for a personal benefit, I I think the cost is actually very uh very low in comparison to what it could be to ensure that we cover all the costs. And I know that if you review some of our other fees and our fee structures, typically, there's other things that are implemented other than just staff time. I know that it's pretty typical for government, which I wish that was not the case, and maybe it doesn't always have to be, but that we look at the hours of electricity, we look at portion of payroll, we look at all those things that are part of the process of having staff there in the first place and asking for that service. Again, we're not making any money here. In fact, I think we're still kind of losing money from just the basic math that I just did. So appreciate you bringing this to us, and I actually appreciate the the cost as to what it is. I think it's uh, if if we wanted, it could be more.
That cost would be if it was one-on-one instruction. Our classes typically have anywhere from a minimum of ten up to sixteen people in them. So you're multiplying that, you know, the two deputies that are out there getting paid. There's anywhere from ten to sixteen people that are paying them. Of course, we can't have a sliding scale based on the number of people. Sometimes we get sixteen people, it'll say they'll be there and fourteen show up. So um it's, it's kind of based on what's what we think is reasonable, and with our our class sizes, the way they are, we believe this is an amount that we can uh cover. We believe this is an amount that we can cover the costs associated with it.
And I mean, I think we need to always cover for the fact that it could just be one person.
Wait, yeah, we wouldn't do it one person.
So.
Just to jump in there real quick, to capitalize what the sheriff says. We won't teach a class with less than twelve students. That's our minimum cutoff is twelve students. We base these numbers off of base sixteen CCW holders in a class. Sometimes we'll end up with twenty students. The maximum we'll allow into a course is twenty students or twenty CCW holders. And then the minimum is twelve. So we took that middle number of sixteen and we based our numbers off of sixteen CCW holders. Because sometimes we're over, sometimes we're under. We felt that that was a fair representation of a normal CCW class. So the board has a better understanding.
I guess I need to backtrack on my comments then. I I I think we did what we usually do for fee structures, which is the overall cost of personnel, not just the per hour cost of personnel. Any further comments before we take action?
Yes.
Please.
So. Yeah, I was going to echo. It seems more than reasonable that fee structure and by comparison, what would a private class like this cost?
On the average, it it depends on your instructor and where you go, but I know over in Utah. At some of the courses over there, you could pay anywhere from a hundred to three hundred dollars for a course of instruction. Depending on whether it's a a new course or a renewal course. And then you still have to pay the fees to what our agency. We did a comparison with Sonoma County, Mendo, Napa and Colusa Counties. And they don't teach or don't instruct CCW courses in those agencies. And they're right about the average of what we're trying to increase our fees to. And then that CCW holder would still have to go out and find a private vendor to put on that course. So I think we're we're right about where it should be reasonable. I think that the county is not going to be burdened. The taxpayers aren't going to be burdened. The CCW holders are going to pay for the course that they're taking, but yet we're not going overboard or going too high.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looking for action.
I don't think you had public comment.
Hey, you didn't do public comment yet.
I thought we did. I'm so sorry. Let's go ahead and open it up for the public, please. Jake.
All right, I. Have sent a mute request out to the Zoom room for if you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
All right. Thank you. Got ahead of myself there. Let's go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve notification of increase of CCW class fees.
Okay.
Quick question before I ask for a roll call on that. Ms. Grant, because we're changing our fee structure and there's not a. Any document other than just the memo, do we need to pronounce the prices that we're changing it to in our motion? Or is the motion as is good enough?
Mr. Chair, you need to either describe the fee or refer to the document that describes the fee.
Okay, I'll let Supervisor Scott amend her motion to make sure we do the appropriate motion.
I will amend my motion. That the fees would be three hundred and ten dollars for a CCW weapons class. Is that good enough?
And a hundred and sixty nine for renewal.
A hundred and sixty nine for renewals.
Fine, thank you.
And we have a second from Supervisor Crandall, I believe, or was that?
Piska.
Okay, Supervisor Piska. And before we roll call again, Ms. Hutchinson.
Yes, just for discussion, Mr. Chair. This was a fee that the admin office didn't know of, and so it's not in the master fee ordinance. But we knew that the sheriff needed to bring this forward to you today, so it's our hope to work with his office to wrap it into the master fee ordinance as a whole, which, as you know, is. Updated around the start of each fiscal year.
Perfect. Thank you much for that update. Okay, Johanna, let's go ahead and go with roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Hi.
Supervisor Piska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia.
Hi.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Lieutenant. Let's go ahead and move on to item seven point five. I believe I saw, was it Ms. Ringen or Martine, Ms. Martinez? Both of them are on here.
They're both here.
Okay, so seven point five consideration consideration of resolution authorizing the chairman of the board to approve and direct a tax collector to sell by public auction via internet. Tax defaulted property, which is subject to the power to sell in accordance with chapter seven of part six of division one of the California Revenue and Taxation Code. And approving sales below minimum price in specified cases. Ms. Ringen.
Good afternoon. The tax sale dates are scheduled for June the fifth to June the eighth of twenty twenty one. There are four hundred and ninety parcels being offered for tax sale. The internet auction is being held at bidforassets.com. Public will be able to view our tax sale at Bid for Assets approximately thirty days prior to the auction. Complete instructions on how to participate in the auction will also be posted on the Bid for Assets website at that time. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the board? Yes, Ms. Piska, Supervisor Piska.
Um, I think four hundred and ninety is a decent start, especially knowing that we're going to probably have. Many of these properties redeemed before the sale. How, what's the strategy for getting us to a higher sale amount for the next sales going forward?
Okay, for this tax year, this is the second auction that we've had. We just completed one in January. So annually, we anticipate having approximately one thousand parcels that we will offer for tax sale. So going forward for the twenty one, twenty two tax year, again, that is our goal.
So is that goal of one thousand for the actual sales or for the original offer?
The one thousand would be the number that we would bring in front of your board to approve for tax auction. So we are. Ongoing. Sending notifications out to taxpayers to redeem their properties on a regular basis. And even prior to a power to sell lien being recorded. We also notify the taxpayer to that they are, if they're eligible to start a payment plan to do so and stay in good standing with their payment plan. Because, of course, you know, offering them a tax sale would be our last option. So the thousand parcels is the. Total number of parcels that we would bring in front of your board to approve for an actual tax auction.
But in the past, it seems like at least half of them get redeemed in the period. So if then we're looking at maybe five hundred sold a year?
Well. Yes, well, our goal is obviously for the property owner to redeem their their property and not be sold at tax sale. And also, the parcels that possibly we are offering now are land only. Or possibly structures that are unoccupied and maybe red tagged. Those are not as desirable generally as some of the properties. So again, the thousand would be our maximum that we would bring to the board.
There's no way to increase that for the for each year? We've got such a backlog.
No, not at this time. And we actually think have approximately, I think it was forty six hundred actual parcels that are eligible for tax sale at this point. Many of those parcels are up in the paper subdivisions. So going forward, probably in the next couple of months, I can bring in front of the board a an updated. List of properties that are actually eligible for sale once we complete these two sales, one in January and the one we are scheduled for June.
Any further comments or questions from the board? So Ms. Ringen, I have been pretty tough on you in this past two years since I've been in office. And I just want to make a statement that I am really pleased that there's four hundred and ninety properties before us for this upcoming tax auction. I will admit that I was hesitant that you would be able to get such a high number after such a short time period between the last auction and this auction. But I I find it very satisfying to see this number. I think that. The fact that people are paying off their properties and that we end up not selling as many. Gives us the same. Overall status that our goal is to not have this amount of tax defaults. If people pay it off, that's a win. People don't pay it off and it gets sold, that's a win. That's what we want to aim for is to reduce the total number that in our system states are tax defaulted. So I think that this is a very good step forward. And I appreciate the work that you and your department have done. And I I I make sure and state that because, again, I've been really hard on you and your department. About our status and where we are, and and I hope that this is a page turning moment. Where we will see this again in the future. And and I appreciate this. What I do want to talk about more specifically is the. Part of our approval is to approve the reductions in minimum bids. The minimum bid, and I'll put air quotes, is based on what the state of California. Not Secretary of State, but Controller's Office tells us the minimum minimum bid must be upon the first time it gets put on a tax defaulted tax auction. And that's basically all the back taxes, all the penalties, all the fees, all the interest and any other assessments or direct taxes that are applied to that. So we have no choice. That's our minimum bid. But if they've already been. Submitted to a tax auction and not sold, we can reduce that minimum bid. So I did ask Ms. Ringen for a list of all those that were reduced. The ones that were reduced before reduction could have been sold at one point nine million dollars. Obviously, they were not sold. That's why they can be reduced further. And they were reduced by one point one million dollars to now have the potential of revenue of seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars. I think that for some, we just don't have a choice. It's either we keep going and adding more and more costs to those properties, which just makes them unsellable. Or undesirable, because nobody wants to buy a property for fifty thousand dollars that's only worth five thousand. But I did have two questions on those properties, on two properties specifically. There's one that is APN number zero, four, zero, one, nine, three, three, five, zero. It's on Emery Avenue in the city of Clear Lake. The minimum bid based on the State Controller's Office minimum bid description is a hundred and eighty one point five thousand. Sorry, let me read that differently. A hundred and eighty one thousand, five hundred dollars approximately. And it was reduced by a hundred and sixty one thousand. Now, I don't think that it would be sellable at that cost, but I'm just wondering, who is losing out on that hundred and sixty one thousand? Is that a? An assessment? A code enforcement for a assessment that was applied and that will not be paid back from the city of Clear Lake? Is that something else? Wondering if you can describe that one? And then the other one I'm looking at, actually, I'll let you respond to that before I move on to the next one and confuse things.
Okay, Green, I must apologize. I didn't have my list in front of me at that the moment. Can I have that parcel number again, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Zero, four, zero, one, nine, three, three, five, zero. And then zero, zero, zero. And it's on one, four, seven, one, eight, Emery Avenue.
Yes, so this particular parcel has been in tax default since, I believe, I think it was two thousand nine. And it's been offered several times, two thousand seventeen. Was one of the first years that it was offered for tax sale. And originally, there was a structure on this property. So there has been a minimum of two nuisance abatement liens that have been placed on this property. I think the base amount of those liens were about fifty eight thousand, fifty nine thousand. And then the tax and penalty course at one and a half percent is quite high. Also, it's in a area for sewer, and so they have delinquent sewer fees that have been added to this property over the years of approximately two thousand. Occasionally, sometimes even if a house is not habitable and people are not living there, those fees will continue. And then they do get attached to the property, but generally what happens is the property value. Does not meet the amount that's on on the tax bill for collection. So I believe there's no structure there now. It's a vacant lot. Although the assessor still, I think, has a value there, they probably have that. Work in progress as far as removing that structure from their roll.
Okay, so there may have been a couple of tax years or a tax year of accumulated taxes based on. A developed property versus a vacant lot.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, no, the taxes and the penalties and interest definitely add, not the taxes. The penalties and and interest absolutely add on a whole lot on top of that. So it it's good to know that it's not that large of a number in comparison. Which I I'm just going to bypass the next one because that's probably the same basic concept. And again, in order to sell them, we have to do something like this. I I I am curious if in the future. We can pass this list through our Auditor Controller's Office to figure out how this impacts our teeter. As our teeter is meant to be stabilized by those interests and fees and things of the kind. And while I don't want to stop you from what you're doing, I'm hoping that in the future we can come with a little. A little bit more information so that we can ensure that the impacts of bypassing those fees and interests do not have. Any harmful effects to any of the departments or even other jurisdictions.
Yes, my goal was to have that list. Be added when submitted the resolution. But unfortunately, due to the timing and the close proximity of the two auctions, I it was not able to be completed in time to present at the same time.
Okay, well, again, I do appreciate that there's four hundred and ninety properties before us. I think I think we are on the right path, and I appreciate that. And also, just for further comments. There is work inside the Economic Development Task Force for paper parcels. Because it it needs a more specific plan than just a tax auction plan. So hopefully that will be coming to you guys in the near future. Supervisor Scott.
Yes, yeah, also very thankful that we're seeing this come upon us so fast after the last auction. I'm really hoping that if Lake County, if we can stay on top of these auctions, people realize that. We are doing this and they'll start paying their taxes, knowing that for so long we weren't doing these auctions and. You know, they didn't pay their taxes, knowing that there was not going to be any follow up. So I would love to see more houses up for auctions. We can get all caught up, but I'm just thankful that we are seeing these so fast.
And and if I may add, because Ms. Ringen did not provide this specific detail of information. According to our conversation, Ms. Ringen, please correct me if I'm wrong. Because of COVID nineteen and the last statement provided by the State Controller's Office about tax auctions, all of these are vacant land. They are not developed land.
That's correct.
Hopefully, in the near future, we will have more developed properties, which are the more likely to be sold. Versus not, so. And then last question real quick. Ms. Ringen, just just for helping us with future timelines. Our discussion, you mentioned that again in Ju, in January or February of twenty twenty two, you would have another tax auction. With approximately the same number?
We're reviewing that now. Going into the new fiscal year, we will be down one staff member for several months. So we're reviewing the possibility of having just one larger sale later on in the year of the thousand parcels, at least for this next tax year. Because of the timing of of the staffing availability.
Okay, and I would suggest please keep the Treasurer Tax Collector Task Force or Ad hoc Committee apprised of what's happening. So that we figure out ways to support you to make sure that that happens.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, let's go ahead and if there's no further comment, Supervisor Crandall.
No, I I want to echo and and thank. You, Barbara, and and Liz, you know, for the work you put into this. I too was, you know, was hoping that this would happen last year. Of course, we know we ran into some issues with the with the pandemic and whatnot. I too would like to see a lot more as well, Supervisor Piska. But at the same time, I'm glad that we're getting them done and I'm looking forward to seeing another sale with a lot more properties. It's it's going to make a difference, I know for sure, in my in my community, in my district. There's there are a lot of properties that are tax defaulted and are problem properties. So this is. This is the way to, you know, this is the path to solving. I won't say it's the way because there's no silver bullet. Wish there was, but there's not. But thank you for doing this.
Thank you. And again, we wouldn't be able to be able to pull this together. Unless we we do have the dedicated hardworking staff that we do. So I want to thank my staff for this, absolutely. So I want to thank my staff for this, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Any public comment? Oh, wait, 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 wait. We have Deputy Director Thomas, who has her finger slashed and raised.
Sorry, I can't figure out how to raise my hand on Zoom. Any any rate. I just had one quick question, and I apologize if this is not the appropriate venue. But I wanted to know if the minimum bid reflected any liens from previous code enforcement actions?
If the properties that bids have not been reduced, have offered before, that's likely. Because we have to include if it's offered for the first time and you have a lien and that lien has been placed on the tax roll, it would be included in the minimum bid.
Thank you so much.
And I believe that I have, is it seventy five, seventy four properties that were reduced further than just the minimum bid? The rest, which would be about four hundred and fifteen, are at the full minimum bid price, which accumulates all of those things, including code enforcement assessments.
I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. So what I'm hearing is if it is the minimum bid and it does have a code enforcement lien, that below the minimum bid does include the code enforcement lien?
If it's below the minimum bid, it would depend on how it is that Ms. Ringen reduced the amount. If she got rid of everything other than the back taxes or if she got rid of portions of things. But sorry, I should probably let Ms. Ringen respond.
Actually, that question would be best answered by the Auditor's Office, how they handle a deficit sale. But if the minimum bid, if we, if there is a lien for nuisance abatement on a tax property that sells for less than the minimum bid, the Auditor's Office, again, would have to, it's it's a prorated process, so it's, and it's not a simple process. So I I wouldn't want to answer for Kathy on that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Jake, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room and see if we have any public comments on this item.
All right, I've sent a unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
All right, without any public comments, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. Any further deliberation before we take action on this item?
Just that I like to, I'm glad also to see that they're working on getting these payment arrangements as well for some of the folks that, you know, are having issues during this difficult time as well. So I appreciate hearing that as well.
I did have one final comment for Barbara. Barbara, if you could just repeat again where if someone's interested in the tax sale, where they need to go to find the information, could you just give us that one more time?
Absolutely. Yes, I'm still here. Yes, the tax sale will be held at bidforassets.com. They can also go to our website, the tax collector's website, and we will have a link to their website. Our auction items will not be available, though, to view until thirty days prior to the sale. But they might be interested in going to that website now because there are other counties that do have auctions going on, and our auction will be very similar to theirs.
Thank you for that. I just want to get that out to the public. I know we had public comment on that, someone had written in. So I just want to make that very clear, how they find the access to that.
Right. But we do prefer that you purchase through our tax auction than someone else.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I wanted to get that information out.
And also, if you go to the agenda portion of our website and look up item seven point five for the March second agenda, then you will see the full list with the APN numbers, and you can start your research today rather than waiting a long period of time. Because doing research on these properties is is vital for making sure that your purchase is a viable purchase for what your needs are. Looking for action from the board?
I offer the resolution.
Okay, Johanna, if we can please have a roll call. Resolution has been offered.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Yes.
Supervisor Piska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Johanna. Thank you, Ms. Ringen. And we look forward to that coming up in June.
Thank you.
So I believe that covers every single one of our agenda items for today, which means that we will be going into closed session. We have two items today. Eight point one is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D one, City of Clear Lake versus County of Lake Etowah. Eight point two, employee disciplinary appeal, Government Code Section five four nine five seven, Appeal Number two thousand and twenty one dash zero one. And unless I've been mistaken, we are done, and we will be moving into closed session. Thank you, everybody, for joining us in today's meeting.
And Mr. Chair, we'll just stay right here and secure the room after the team is done.
Perfect. Thank you.